Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, Ms. Og, would you please call roll?
Rodriguez.
Present.
Elmore, present. Coniston, present. Cantor.
Present.
Peck.
Present.
Morrison.
Present.
Bailey. Morrison.
Present.
President Potter.
Present.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse the absent member of council.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Coniston, to excuse the absent member of council. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes. The absent member has been excused. At this time, I will take a motion to the approval of the June 1st, 2021 Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the June 1st minutes.
Second. Been a motion by Ms. Coniston, second by Mr. Cantor, for the approval of the minutes. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes. The minutes have been approved. At this time, we've got a special presentation dealing with the water utility surcharge, and this will be headed by Megan Meyer, City of Whitehall Deputy for Public Affairs, as well as Ryan Andrews with EMHNT. So if you'd please come forward.
There we go. Okay. So today, I'm giving a presentation that basically just goes over the history of the Ohio EPA consent order that's placed on City of Whitehall for sanitary sewer. A lot of you have been, obviously, involved in the community for a long time. This is something that goes back to 2009, and so I'm just going to kind of step through some of the history on how this was established, what the city did in response when we were placed under the consent order by the EPA, and then, you know, what are the steps that we're taking now to continue to fulfill those obligations. So just a brief introduction in history. So in 2009, the Ohio EPA directors' final findings and orders were published. We call them the DFFOs, and basically, those are some findings and orders that were placed on satellite communities to the city of Columbus. So any of the suburban communities that have a sewer system that discharges to Columbus, where we have a sewer agreement with Columbus for them to treat the wastewater, those are satellite communities. So pretty much everybody around 270, all of the other suburban communities, then feed into Columbus and our satellite communities, so there's a handful of them. And so the orders just basically require the city of Whitehall to operate and maintain their sanitary sewer system the best they can, and to try to take any actions necessary to minimize sewer overflows and to eliminate inflow and infiltration. So inflow and infiltration is clean water that gets into the sanitary sewer system. So any water that comes in through leaky joints, leaky manholes, cracks in pipes, things of that nature. Another example of inflow is sometimes there might be a storm inlet that's actually tied directly into the sanitary sewer. Those things were common prior to the Clean Water Act. Today, they're considered illegal connections. And so our job was to try to find these things and to help the city come up with a list of recommendations and projects to mitigate them in the future. So the findings that were published by the EPA director were basically just listed out some of the facts of the situation. You know, one, the finding was that the city of Whitehall discharges sewer to the city of Columbus. Another finding was that Columbus was actually under a consent order from the EPA. So Columbus was placed under a similar consent order for sanitary sewer in 2002, and they developed this plan, they call it the CCAP, to come up with ways to improve their sanitary sewer system. And one of the things that Columbus asserted was that it's difficult for them to maintain their sanitary sewer system when all these suburban communities are discharging sewer to us, and they're not placed under, you know, similar requirements. It wasn't really Columbus pointing the finger, it was more them just saying, hey, we need them to help us, you know, conform to what you're requiring of us. And so that was really how the directors' final findings and orders came to be and how they became levied onto the suburban communities. And then, of course, another finding is that sanitary sewer overflows, you know, it's kind of a no-brainer. They impact human health, and they're also prohibited by law, so those are things that we should do the best we can to try to mitigate. So just kind of an overview of the city of Whitehall sanitary sewer system. This map shows the city. The sewers that are in red are the red lines. On the map are City of Whitehall sewers, and the blue stars indicate the locations where the sewers leave the city of Whitehall and enter into the city of Columbus. And so there are several of them, there are several places where we discharge into Columbus. So the orders that were placed on the city, there were 13 of them, and I'm not going to go through each one of them individually, but the first four or so basically dictated that the city of Whitehall and all the other suburban communities had to perform sanitary studies to investigate and find problems in their sewer system and then go and fix them. Orders number five and six were sort of about the schedule and the timeframes for when these things needed to be done, and orders seven through 13 are more about maintenance of the system and ongoing, you know, ongoing operation and maintenance. Some of them discussed how you're supposed to notify the public if there's sewer overflow and what the city's supposed to do in response to those types of situations. So all in all, you know, there were several components of this. A lot of it was developing sort of standard operating procedures for how the city crews are supposed to respond when there's an issue, how they're supposed to notify the public, but then another big part of it was doing this large-scale citywide sewer study to identify problems in the city's sewer system and then make recommendations to fix those things. So just kind of a recap on the schedule. All of this happens, the study phase happened between 2009 and 2014, and there were five deadlines that the EPA mandated, and we met all of those deadlines. The first one was simply just to acknowledge and sign the orders and to agree to the consent order. The second one was to develop a schedule for how we were going to study the sewer system in the city of Whitehall. The third deadline was for us to develop a sewer, sanitary sewer overflow emergency response plan and public notification plan, and those were submitted in late 2009. The CMOM is, that stands for Capacity Management Operations and Maintenance Program. It's basically an operations and maintenance program for the city sewer system, and that had to be developed by 2012. And then finally, the final report where we listed out all the public improvement projects that needed to be done to correct the issues that we found, that schedule had to be delivered to the EPA in February of 2014, and so we did all those things. So this slide here split into two columns. On the left side, it shows the requirements from the EPA. On the right side, it lists the different activities that we did as part of our sewer investigation study that really took place from 2010 through 2013. And so we did a variety of things, manhole inspections. We broke the city up into about 10 to 12 little pods and did flow monitoring in the sewer system to determine how the system was operating during dry weather and wet weather flows. We did closed-circuit televising and smoke testing, which is essentially kind of putting a giant smoke bomb into the sewer system and then seeing where smoke emanates, you know, to the surface. And that helps us identify where there are cracks or where there's possibly broken pieces of pipe, and helps us zero in on where we should do the televising. So all of those things were done over the course of several years. It's a multi-year study. And then, next slide. And so basically, the way that we developed the strategy for this was we did the less expensive, more broad-spectrum study items first, and then as we went, we kind of, each one of those things, the results of those types of activities helped us zero in on the really bad areas. And once we found the really bad areas, we televised those areas. So basically, putting a camera into the sewer and taking a closed-circuit video of the sewer system. And the reason we did it that way is because camering the sewers is incredibly expensive. And so we used all the less expensive tools that we had available to kind of zero in on the really deficient areas and allow us to focus just on those areas with the camery because it's, again, an expensive activity. And this strategy was very similar to what was done in many of the other suburban communities as well. You know, we managed the program for six other communities besides Whitehall, so the EPA was seeing the same things from Whitehall that it was seeing from Bexley and Reynolds Curve and Grove City and the other communities that we were working with, but we were also communicating with a lot of the other cities as well because we wanted to make sure that as a group, we provided kind of a unified response back to the EPA. So I guess the findings were, there were a lot of findings, and I summarized them into three bullet points here to keep this brief. But essentially, one of the things that we discovered is that the city of Whitehall, the sewer system does allow for excessive inflow and infiltration, by and large. What I say here is percent captures were in the range of 15% to 20%, and I'll explain what that is. So percent captures, that's something that we determined through flow monitoring. So we have these meters in the sewer system that measure flow, and we take measurements during dry times and wet times, you know, after rain events and when we're in a drought. It will also tell us the difference between, you know, the morning peak when everybody's, you know, up and taking showers and making breakfast versus the middle of the day when it's kind of a little bit lower. But then, we also had rain gauges out there, too. And so when it would rain, we would compare the rain gauge data to the flow data in the sewer. And it's a little bit of a modeling exercise and some calculations, but what you end up discovering is what percentage of the rainwater do we think is actually getting into the sewer system, into the sanitary sewer system? And on average, Whitehall was kind of within that 15% to 20% range. A really tight system that's newer and has, you know, higher-quality joints is probably closer to like the 5% to 7% range. There's still going to be clean water that gets in during rain events, but not as much as we're seeing here. And this is to be expected, too. You know, most of older communities that have an older system function very similarly to believe how Whitehall functioned during these tests. Manhole inspections, we did citywide manhole inspections, and we found out that about 30% of them needed some sort of repairs, and we're working our way through those now. Then with the closed-circuit televising, we televise about 10% of the city, and, you know, we found a lot of broken pipe, cracked pipe, deposits, tree roots get into the sewer system again and kind of block it up as well. So all of those things were discovered, noted, and, you know, the areas that had deposits got cleaned, the areas with broken pipes are on our ongoing list of repair areas and have either been repaired or still scheduled to be repaired. And so basically, these findings then, you know, turned into recommendations, which turned into capital improvement plans for sewer, and, you know, that's kind of where we're at now, is we're implementing that capital improvement plan. So at the time, 2013, when we submitted that final report to the EPA, we predicted that there would be about $2.7 million worth of repairs to the sanitary sewer system, and that was, caveat here, that was in $2013, so obviously, you know, construction cost inflation goes up, and so it grows every year. But we divided those projects, that $2.7 million, into 15 years' worth of improvements, and sent that plan to the EPA as part of our final submittal. And so we're working against that plan right now still. Obviously, that is a 2014 through 2028 plan, and so we're still, you know, working our way through that, and we're on target with it, but that's kind of where we stand right now. The other piece is that with the CMOM, the Maintenance and Operation Plan, the city's required to do annual inspection and cleaning of the sewer system, and they'll do that through their own crews at times, when they have calls and go look at sewers or clean up sewers, and then they'll also have us do it occasionally. We did a large section of sewer last year where we cleaned and televised. And so part of the goal of the DFFOs was to create sort of a revolving door, a revolving system that sort of perpetually goes on and on, where you're required to inspect different parts of your system every year. Well, when you do that, you find new problems, and when you find those new problems, you have to do improvements to correct them. And so that was really sort of the overall goal, was to create a system where these communities are doing a more proactive job of finding problems in the sewer system before things get blocked up and, you know, residents start dealing with problems, but then also go on and continue to improve them. So our list of projects, even though we said $2.7 million in 2013 when we submitted it to the EPA, it keeps on growing because we keep on, you know, we keep on finding new things every year that need to be added. And so, like I said here in the last bullet, the overall goal of the DFFOs was to continually identify and repair sewer problems. So even though we gave ourselves an end date of 15 years, 2028, it's going to continue to go on beyond that. That's really my presentation. You know, if you have any questions about the history of this, I was involved in all of it and involved in Whitehall's response to this and worked on all of those studies, actually. So feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions, or if you have any questions right now, I'd be happy to answer them as well.
So Ryan, what I'm hearing is that this is really a never-ending, this maintenance and repair never ends, correct? I mean...
Right. Yeah. I mean, ideally, we're going to find new things that need to be fixed every year. The dollar amounts and the size of those things might change, you know, as the years go on, and we've already corrected a bunch of things. Maybe the things that we find are less expensive and easier fixes, and so maybe the cost does shrink at some point, but not for the real foreseeable future. You know, it is an older system, and it's going to continue, we're going to continue to find things that need to be fixed. Well, and to that point, I would just add, you know, last week, council, I shared with you the results of that 5% inspection that came across a number of issues that Ryan and EMHNT's estimate on fixing those issues was nearly $600,000.
Mr. President. Ryan, I do have a question. Thank you, first of all, for the thorough, detailed explanation. What would be the impact if nothing was done to improve the system?
Well, I mean, things would just, you know, continue to get worse. I guess in the investigation that we did last year, for example, we found a couple situations where there were pipes that were, you know, getting close to a collapse. And so, you know, the longer you ignore, I mean, this type of infrastructure is easy to ignore because it's underground, nobody sees it. It's not like a road that people drive on and have to deal with potholes. It only becomes an issue when there's a problem. But it's better for us to get in there and identify those problems before they become an issue and try to fix them. And so there's a lot of clay pipe in the city that was installed in the, you know, in the '50s and '60s, and that pipe, you know, has issues. It's prone to cracking, it's prone to failure. At this point, it's been in the ground for 70 years, and we definitely need to address those issues.
And a follow-up, has the city been diligent in the CMOM, because it is our responsibility to do the maintenance? Have we been diligent in doing the maintenance in the system?
Yeah.
And is this problem because of the age of the system?
Yeah.
Continued problems because of the aging of the system?
Yeah. I think there are a couple things. One of, I think the primary issue is definitely the age. You know, in the era in which the sewer was installed, it was prior to the time when, you know, PVC pipe was not a thing, high-performance, you know, sealing joints were not a thing in pipe. You know, this clay pipe is basically just laid together and stuck together with a little bit of, you know, like a mastic-type glue. It's not something that we would install today. And so, you know, it's a little bit of that. I think also, you know, years ago, I don't think that the standards were quite the same as they are today in terms of sizing pipe either. So you might have some areas that are a little bit undersized just because, you know, 60, 70 years ago, engineers designed things differently than they do today, and now, you know, so many people have been sued for various things that we put in, you know, two times safety factor and things like that into our designs nowadays, and that just wasn't done back then.
Thank you. I don't have anything else.
If there's some counsel, have...
Can we get a copy of the picture?
Any further comments?
Ryan, you said that 10% of the city was investigated, you took a look at. Was it kind of all over the city that you looked at?
Yeah. So we did flow monitoring and smoke testing and manhole inspections throughout the entire city. And then where we got positive returns from the smoke testing, where we saw smoke coming up to the surface, or if we saw it coming out of a storm sewer catch basin, for example, those were the areas that we identified for closed-circuit televising. And, you know, the objective was to keep the study cost-effective, and the approach that we did was designed to target the worst areas. And so it was all over the city. I mean, there was not one particular area or neighborhood that, where we found it to be extremely worse than others. It was pretty widespread.
And I think the basic takeaway that says it's not going to self-correct or self-rehabilitate.
Right.
Right, yeah. No. It's just going to keep on deteriorating.
Ryan, in fact, all that you've encountered, it's probably hasn't been higher, actually, if you stop and think of the materials. I mean, you're using an earthen product.
Right.
It's just under pressure and fire, and so, you know, it's going to deteriorate, it's going to, you know, you're going to run into issues, so I'm surprised that's that low deterioration you found.
When you say problems, you're talking about house flooding and...
Well, the problems that we identified, you know, they, I mean, they could potentially lead to things like that. A lot of the things that we see are just severe cracking of the pipe. You know, sometimes we'll see it where the pipe has a crack right down the top, and it's started to crunch in, so where it looks like an oval almost instead of a round circle when you're looking at the camera. And that's obviously a high-risk situation because if that just continues, it's going to be a blockage and a serious repair. And yeah, if that does collapse completely, it's going to obviously cut off the homeowners from being able to empty into the sewer system.
And I know that when we first moved into our house, and I live south of Maine, we had a plumbing issue. And I remember them having to replace pipes in the house and do a lot of digging in the grass, and it was a hefty amount.
Yeah.
So I can only imagine a whole city.
Yeah.
Square of scale.
Yes.
Is there any other questions or comments from council? Ryan, thank you so much for coming out.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
This brings us to our first...
Mr. President, there's, Megan has some additional.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, technical difficulties. President Potter, members of council, we asked Ryan tonight to come and explain the DFFO project, of course, as part of our larger discussion of the water and sewer utility surcharge. Believe it or not, it's been a month since I tried to boil down months of analysis for you guys into about an hour presentation. I'm not going to do that again tonight, I promise. But since we presented that to you about a month ago, we have had a number of resident questions come up about that presentation. We are still planning on a virtual town hall. We scheduled it for July 15th, and so information will be out there soon about that. But in advance of that, we're seeing some common questions arise, so we really just wanted to address a couple of those tonight before we introduce the formal legislation to you all for your first reading. So with that, Jenna, I speak, what I was speaking about was a presentation from, again, about a month ago. I just want to very quickly let anybody know who hasn't gotten to see that yet, it is available online. Again, I'm not going to rehash all of it again tonight, but that presentation is on the city's website, and this presentation as well will be loaded to the city's website tomorrow. So if you'd like to see the basis for everything that we're talking about, from how we put together the CIP to the basis for the surcharge as proposed, it's all there, so take a look. Jenna? So before I dive in, I know it has been about a month since we talked about it, so just really quickly, what is a water and sewer utility surcharge? Again, it would be an added fee paid by all residential and commercial water and sewer customers that are part of the city of Columbus, with the fees remitted back to the city. There's not one currently established in the city of Whitehall. Why would we establish one? As Ryan was just talking about, the city's infrastructure is aging, and what we're looking to do is create a dedicated funding source for a portion of that infrastructure replacement. So in this specific instance, because it is a water and sewer utility surcharge, we would be tied to funding water and sewer system replacements and other maintenance with that money. So that's what we're proposing this for. How much would it raise? I'll get into a little bit of how this was designed, and I know we talked about that last time, too, but essentially, the two surcharges would estimate to bring in about $750,000 annually for water and then about $350,000 annually for sewer, and I'll talk a little bit more about how we'd use that. Jenna? So with that, we kind of have two different options when it comes to water. One would be taking that $750,000 and using it on an annual basis towards a capital improvement program. As you remember, last time we spoke, it was the first time we've ever introduced a five-year capital improvement program, and that was inclusive of water, sewer, and roadways. This specifically, so we could do that, we could pay as we go, or, as we're going to talk about, and what our recommendation was, was to bond so that we were able to, at the front of this, take out a bond to do about $9.7 million in improvements as early as 2023, along with some pay-as-you-go as well. So what does that look like? That means that we would actually be able to take about $500,000 from that $750 for a bond payment, and then every two years, do about $500,000 in additional work. And so what that really allows us to do is see a big picture, and we named all those projects last time, but see the big picture, get a really good start on some major projects, and as needed, identify smaller projects that we can do that can fit into the program overall. So again, I just mentioned, what is this huge five-year CIP, and have we had one in the past? No, this is genuinely our first attempt at looking at the community holistically and telling you guys, this is what we have funding to do, and this is what we do not. And at this stage, we do not have a dedicated funding source for water and sewer system replacements. Now, what we just talked about with Ryan was the Ohio EPA mandated inflow and infiltration program, which we do have a dedicated funding source, and I'll make sure to make that distinction here in just a moment because that's one of the big questions that keeps getting raised. because that's one of the big questions that keeps getting raised. So the biggest question that I keep seeing pop up, and I won't say where, is who would pay the surcharge? Because I'm a homeowner, does everybody in Whitehall have to pay this? So Jenna, it would actually be paid by pretty much any water customer in the city of Whitehall. So that's not just your homeowners. It's also your renters and landlords. That could apply to single-family homes. That could apply to your large multifamily homes as well. And it's also your business and commercial end users. So think of any major business in the community. They would be paying their fair portion based on the size of their water meter and their water usage as well. So what would that look like, too? The average homeowner, you're seeing about a total of seven dollars a month. Some of our larger commercial and multifamily complexes, I guess, you can see some of those surcharges go as high as thirty-five hundred dollars a month. So you really truly are seeing the whole community buy into this program. And that is, again, true for all businesses, multifamily and landlords in the community. So another big question that we keep seeing, because this is not the first time we've talked about our underground infrastructure in recent years. I thought that the income tax increase adopted by voters in 2010 was going to pay for all necessary water and sewer projects. That one keeps popping up. So Jenna, so issue thirty. It's probably been a long time since, you know, you heard people talking about that. So what happened in 2010? Voters approved an income tax increase from two to two and a half percent. And this is the clip, and I know you can't see this at home, but it's a clip from one of the ads that was placed around that time explaining the increase. And so what did we say? It's needed for immediate infrastructure needs to pay for unfunded Ohio EPA mandates. That's what Ryan just spoke to. To maintain current service levels to residents and to reinvest in our parks and recreation systems, Jenna. And then it actually got even more specific. So again, talking about the EPA regulations. And then to maintain critical city services, again, such as police, fire, and snow removal. And we have heard some residents ask the question, well, I thought it was one or the other. If we pass the income tax increase, I thought that meant we never needed a sewer utility surcharge. At the time, the city was fairly sure that to fund the capital improvements they wanted at the time, it would be nearly twenty-five dollars a month or seventy-five dollars quarterly to residents, far and above what we're proposing now. And so at that time, the income tax increase was to fund the Ohio EPA mandated project, Jenna. And that's something that we absolutely follow through on, just as Ryan spoke to. Just in the first couple of years alone, we spent nearly six hundred and ninety thousand dollars on studies. All of those government acronyms that he just ran through, all of those things that get done in that timeframe. And we are still right in the smack middle of the program implementation of that. Now, the improvements that we're considering are above and beyond that with the new surcharge. And we'll get to that question as well. So what else happened with that? Well, with issue thirty, we said we were going to make other infrastructure improvements, and we have done just that. I didn't go all the way back to 2011. But since 2017, we've seen over thirteen million dollars poured into roadways and through streets, about five hundred thousand dollars into the sanitary system and another seven hundred thousand dollars into the water system. However, as we spoke about last time, in that time and pretty much in our entire history, we've only seen, what, four or five actual water main replacement projects. So really, what we're doing is spot repair with that money. We also saw another thing that issue thirty said we would do was major park renovations. And we've done just that. Again, just since 2017, we've seen over eleven million dollars invested in all five community parks. And then, of course, in the opening of the new Whitehall Community Park Y N C A. We also said that we needed it to maintain services. And so you probably noticed me time to time from things like these pool resource officers, data analysts for our police division, and then fire and general administration needs. And then beyond that, there are other capital needs that aren't wrapped into our C F P. Sometimes that might be facility maintenance. It might be rolling stuff, thinking about replacement of police and fire vehicles, snow removal vehicles, things of that nature. So that's what's been going on since issue thirty was passed. So how are these projects different than the system improvements that we talked about in 2010 leading up to the income tax increase in 2011? So again, in 2011, really, it was just the start of the whole Ohio EPA I N I mitigation program. That, and I'm not going to get into all the engineering because Ryan just did, but that really is limited to the sanitary sewer system and reduction of that steam water into our dirty water lines. So what we're now proposing with our new five-year C I P is a major overhaul of the water distribution and sewer system. Will that get done in five years? Absolutely not. This is just a minimum proposal to get us started. So we would be doing water main and sewer segment replacement. We would double the annual inspections. Ryan and Zach just talked about going, you know, from five percent of the inspections, we found about six hundred thousand dollars in issues that needed remediated. We would actually double the amount of inspections we would do every year from five to ten percent. And then just our general maintenance, the cleaning, manhole replacement, things like that. Next question. Can't the city just find money for water and sewer system replacement projects somewhere else in the budget? Don't we have the money somewhere else? So what I thought I would show is just a brief overview of what our 2021 general fund budget looks like. Now, mind you, there are other funds outside of the general fund. So this is not the budget and rule. But this is the general, you know, our major fund that we operate out of. So just doing some quick math, nearly forty percent of what we spend money on is police and fire services. And that doesn't account for their benefits. That's accounted for in another portion of the budget. And so really, if you're asking where does the money go predominantly there? The next biggest chunky kind of see citywide maintenance and expenses. This is where the general fund draws down to get moved into fiduciary funds to pay for capital expenses. So that's where the current capital expenses come out of. We did have our biggest C I P year ever this past year. I guess we're still in the midst of it, really. Nearly four million or over four million dollars, of which about three point eight came from the general fund and other things are coming from things like our sewer mandate fund and the like. So that is where the money is going. So this year, you know, again, we were able to do our largest capital improvement year ever. Still in the midst of it, having excellent results. And I keep seeing on social media, people saying, when's my street? Like, when is that next? I need this. I should be the next one on the docket. Well, we've only just begun. And we've only just now started having revenue for programs like this. So we'd love to continue to see those programs move forward. But we've got to have the revenue and the funding to support it. So question. Why now? We've never needed a surcharge to fund infrastructure improvements in the past. This one's a little bit more technical, so bear with me for just a second. You know, we all know that our water production provider is the city of Columbus. And of course, we have a contract with them, just like we would any service provider. So the timeline goes, and about 2014 is when we entered into our most recent contract with the city of Columbus. And what that contract allows us is so many water main breaks in any given year. It also allows the city of Columbus to say, after you've reached that allotted number of breaks for so many years in a row, we're going to call you on it. And we want to see how you're going to help improve your system so that we're not out there fixing your breaks all the time. Well, go figure. Whitehall exceeded our breaks in 2015, 2016, 2017, and frankly, every year after. But we got called on it in 2018. And the city of Columbus did formally request from us, as they were allowed to, for their contract, a water main replacement plan. So in 2019, with the help, of course, of E M H and T, the city provided that plan. And we did, at that time, initiate the water and sewer utility surcharge analysis that we presented to you just a couple of weeks ago. And that was how we were thinking the plan might be funded. Of course, in 2020, lots of things didn't happen. And so because of the financial impact of COVID-19, we did defer most major infrastructure projects. And of course, this conversation also got put on the shelf for a couple of months. Well, 2021 comes back around. The city of Columbus has again requested information on how we plan to fund our plan. And so at this point, we do not yet have that answer, which is part of our discussion with this analysis. So what happens if we continue to defer maintenance? Well, we can see it. The proof is in the pudding. You will experience more water main breaks, which can lead to service disruptions. That's not just for you and your neighbors, but also for the businesses that operate here in Whitehall and may rely on that service. Again, back to timing. So why now? We've never needed this in the past. Kind of like some people may be experiencing. I know everybody's refinancing right now, or at least considering it. There is an extremely low cost of borrowing. And we do have access to a federal loan program that would actually assist us with the securing of ridiculously low rates if we were to bond now for those water main replacement projects. And then again, back to the cost of deferred maintenance. You may recognize this chart from my presentation four weeks ago. But, you know, every year, we get so many, I believe it's fifteen water main breaks from the city of Columbus. And beyond that, they charge us for everything else. So just in the last, well, not last five years, but from 2015 to 2019, we spent nearly a million dollars on just paying them to fix our repairs. That's a million dollars that was not proactively put toward system replacement, but rather just on spot repairs. Could we have the surcharge? So how did you come up with this number? And could we start somewhere else? So the surcharge amount, it really, we started with a C I P that was designed, honestly, as a minimum project proposal that would still start us out, that would give us meaningful impact that we would benefit from, from economies of scale. But it is not the end-all, be-all. And no, it is not a system-wide replacement. It is a start of a multi-decade process. So this is just getting started on something, frankly, that should have been started three decades ago. So what could it do at this amount? We could afford a nine-million-dollar bond, again, with that five hundred thousand dollars every two years or so for extra projects. And then three seventy-five for those sewer projects. Should we go with a smaller surcharge amount? That full bond amount obviously would not be affordable nor in our budget. And those smaller projects would not be possible. So we would probably lose the ability to do smaller projects mixed in with the large replacement projects. Question. If the city stopped offering businesses incentives, could we afford the water and sewer system projects? I see this one come up a lot. So Zach, I believe you want to just speak to
Sure, I mean, I'll jump in on this. So, I mean, obviously, this is something that I know council has heard from residents and certainly we have heard as well. There are really two types of incentives that the city uses for economic development to drive business growth. The first one is a property tax abatement. That is where city council approves abating the increase in property tax after improvements are made on so that the business or the developer does not see an increase in that property tax after construction. So if we were not to use that tool, the city would not realize really any additional revenue. As the chart up there says, we only, the city only receives about one and a half percent of any given property tax bill. So as an example, for residents, for every thousand dollars they pay in property tax, we only receive fourteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. So if we didn't do the tax abatement that is necessary to secure the development and the new jobs, think of FedEx, think of Cyrilia. Without those tools, the business would not be located here. And if they came here without it, the city would not receive, again, any real benefit from that property tax. The second tool that we use is the income tax reimbursement grant. We've used this for a number of businesses from fifteen-person employers, you know, up to large major employers. And again, what we do is we reimburse the businesses a percentage of the withholding that we collect from the business and their employees being located in Whitehall. And so here, again, those incentives have been necessary to attract businesses to come to Whitehall. And a substantial amount of employees have resulted in working from White, in Whitehall because of those incentives. And so, you know, in cases where they're large employers and we're giving up to, not in every case, but up to fifty percent of the income tax back, fifty percent of one is still better than a hundred percent of zero. And so while we've given the incentive, we certainly have increased revenue because of the net that the city would have received.
Question. If the city stopped purchasing blighted property, would there be money for water and sewer system projects?
So again, I'll speak to this. This has been another question that I know you all have been asked, and certainly I've been asked. The two properties that typically people are talking about are either the Commons at Royal Landing or the Woodcliff condominium project. Those are the two that they talk about. The Commons at Royal Landing was purchased using a tax increment financing district on Main Street. And we were, under state law, allowed to use it to purchase blighted property. Now, that does not mean that we could use it to replace water lines on name, pick-your-residential street. State law would not allow us to utilize that revenue for that repair. The Woodcliff condominiums, we took out a non-tax revenue bond. And that will be repaid to us by the developer of that project. So it is ultimately a revenue and expense-neutral borrower. So we could not take that money and invest it into infrastructure improvements because there was no then repayment source. So again, I just wanted to address, you know, those two are the ones that people talk about. And as you can see, it's revenue that really we couldn't have used on infrastructure or wouldn't have had a repayment source had we used it.
Question. Why is the city approving new development when current infrastructure is in need of repair? So new developments do not have a measurable significant impact on overall capacity. It really is a drop-in in the bucket of the overall system. New developments do, however, attract new residents and businesses to continue to increase both the amenities that are in our community and then, of course, our overall tax savings in terms of income tax revenue. And they would also be subject to the surcharge. So just because they're brand-new, it doesn't mean that they're getting away with not investing in the same infrastructure that the rest of the community would be investing into. Question. If the city of Columbus contracts holds the city of Whitehall accountable for system upgrades, can we just go find another water service provider? Well, first of all, to kind of counter that question, we need to complete these water and sewer system projects regardless of our provider. So just because we're talking about it now, because we're getting called on our issues, doesn't mean we shouldn't have been investing in this decades ago. This is frankly, something that has been passed from decades to decades, from, you know, generations to generations. And we really need to think on it now. There are not actually other service providers outside of the city of Columbus. And unfortunately, no, we do not have the ability to provide our own water. It is not something that we're able to do. Question. Are there other grant opportunities the city has not pursued for the water and sewer system project? So if you were following me along at all with the budget presentation, I spoke to you of the fact that we're doing four million dollars in C I P projects funded by city revenue this year. And there's about five million funded in outside revenue, which is amazing. Nine million dollars in a community like ours is outstanding. So are there similar grant opportunities for projects like this? Unfortunately, they're very few and far between. But what we do have the opportunity to do is essentially take out a revenue-based bond, that revenue base being a surcharge. So what were our recommendations that we phased in? That we phase in, of course, a new water and sewer utility surcharge. We do understand that we're still in the midst of COVID-19 and people are still getting back up on their feet. So really, this is something that we want to pass now, but implement a year from now. And so that first half of the total combined surcharge would potentially go into effect if adopted next July. And then the rest of it, so up to that whole $7.52 six months after that. So really, we're planning now for the future. Now, why that timing, why does that help? The funding cycle for the grants, or for, I'm sorry, for the bonds that we proposed lines up with that exactly. So if we were to adopt the surcharge, we would be able to apply for that revenue-backed bond that I mentioned. And then, of course, we believe that the five-year CIP is an immensely valuable tool for the city. And so we hope that it's something we talk about every year as part of the budget process and that we revisit the surcharge every two years as part of the budget process to make sure it's doing what it's supposed to do. So what are the next steps? As I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation, we are going to formally introduce this to council and then have a virtual town hall of July routine. So I know a lot of that was me pulling questions that I've gotten from residents. We're not allowed it back and forth. We want to have that back and forth with you. Let us know what you're thinking and what your questions are. The third reading and consideration would be as early as July 20th. And again, if implemented, we submit for that Ohio EPA funding for that revenue-backed bond in March of 2022. And it would be okay that we didn't start collecting. We just have to have it in place. And then again, phasing it in next July, and then the rest of it in next January. With that, do you have any questions that weren't already addressed?
And that will be up tomorrow.
Yes, yes. That and the initial analysis from a month ago is on the website.
Next Tuesday, you're going to introduce the legislation?
Yes, sir.
Let me ask you one. What if we don't do the surcharge? Would you like to explain what would happen in that process?
Yes. So if, well, you know, kind of back to Ryan's point, it's certainly not going to get better. And so you can continue to see water main breaks. I sit right next to the service department. And in the winter, frankly, it's call after call after call. Hey, when is my water coming back on? Why is my service disrupted? Can't we do better? Yes, we can do better. This is a conversation, it's pretty amazing to me that we were able to come up actually with a surcharge amount that was this low. You know, if you're thinking about $20, $10, and you're saying, well, maybe to do this, we need $25 a month for people. And here we are, because of responsibly growing our fat tax base, we're able to afford infrastructure improvements because of that outside of this. This needs addressed too, though. And so we don't want to stop things like our road improvement project to address this. If we don't address this, that is a conversation we have to have. You could expect to see roadway projects go away. You could expect to see actually very little because it would all have to go underground responsibly.
That was a month? That was a...
Yes, a month. So you are billed quarterly, so it's a monthly charge and you get a quarterly bill.
And if the, none of the repairs are done or any surcharge's done and we exceed our 15 per contract, is there additional penalties that Columbus may be implementing in the future for excessive repairs?
So, I mean, I can speak to that. There is no additional, to my knowledge, and I don't have the contract in front of me, but to my knowledge, there are no additional financial penalties. Having said that, Columbus has begun the process of requiring us to create and implement a water main replacement program. Ultimately, if we were to not comply with that, the city of Columbus has the authority under the water contract to terminate that water contract, which would then require the city to find another water provider. Right, there is no other water.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Megan, thank you as well. At this time, I'll move for our first poll public. And given the situation, we've not been able to invite guests in in over a year, I'm just going to quickly review how poll public works. And anybody who wishes to come forward, please ask, you state your name and address and address your topic. And you have up to three minutes to discuss that. There are two poll publics, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end of the meeting. I will also say, and I'll talk a bit more about this when we get to our public hearings. But if you're here on the public hearing and you wish to discuss that, there will be an opportunity for you to come forward and discuss that during the public hearing as well. So that said, this is our first poll public. Does anybody have, if they'd like to?
May I have just a moment to say hello after a year gone?
Hello to you.
Before my three minutes start? I just want to say hello to everyone that I haven't seen in so long. Glad you're well. Glad to see all these things, how terrific that is. And a special best wishes to Mr. Rodriguez for all the difficulty he went through. I'm glad you're here.
Gerald Dixon, 3877 Donie Street. A couple of information points I wanted to share. I just wanted to point out that the public hearings always seem to be held on the same night that legislation is slated for a vote. Yet, you have entreated the community to come forth and express their feelings, yea or nay, on that legislation just minutes before the vote. How are you expected to make the informed and fully considerate decisions that vote begs when you've had scant minutes to maul over what may sometimes be rafts of information and feelings designed to sway you one way or another? By the construct in place here, it seems that your process isn't tilted in the favor of developers and the administration who have been bombarding you with information now for weeks. You've had plentiful time to maul over the developers and economic development team's information blitz, but yet, the citizens get a last-minute, last-up opportunity to sway you from weeks of sell jobs just before you vote on it? Clearly a wrong the citizens should demand be righted. As well, a week or two ago, Director of Public Service and Economic Development, Mr. Woodruff, reminded you that it was you who approved the OHM Whitehall blueprint in regard to 46/2021. In reminding you, he's suggesting that when he brings you things like this, he's merely doing his job in alignment with that blueprint. And because you approved it, it's really your obligation to approve those things like this that he brings forth. Otherwise, you're just going against your own decision. And yet, I wanted to let you, and the record show, that the OHM blueprint actually showed the future land use for that corner as quote-unquote "high-density mixed use." Nowhere did I see apartments only, high-density or otherwise. As such then, when Mr. Woodruff plays that OHM blueprint obligation card with council, it is in fact not what the Whitehall Works blueprint recommended. Therefore, any argument that you should be compelled to this legislation because you voted for the OHM plan is erroneous. Finally, I would like to say that the OHM plan recommends many things for our community of extraordinary change and development. While terrific in theory, what happens if there is strong citizen resistance? Are you, the elected representatives of those citizens, going to forfeit your obligations to the citizens you're supposed to be representing? To be indebted to a planning entity which doesn't live, sleep, breathe, or eat here? I remind you that your investment in the OHM plan may strip you of your individual and independent voices, but that doesn't absolve you of your primary obligations to the citizens. Thank you. Nice to see you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward for poll public?
Good evening, members of the council. It is with heavy heart...
Ma'am, would you please state your name and address?
I'm so sorry.
No worries.
My name's Tara Gannon. I live at 703 Maplewood Avenue for 12 years now. My home is the second house just north of the proposed rezoning. After selling my home in Bexley, I chose Whitehall for several reasons, mostly because of the community of neighbors, land, and overall aesthetics. We, as a community, do not want this. Rezoning for this grossly oversized complex will only serve to excessive traffic, strain on the already antiquated sewage system, large amounts of parking overflow onto our streets, rise in crime, noise, and more trash strewn in our yards and streets. I'm deeply concerned as there is nothing proposed in the way of a retention wall or a fence. There is nothing protecting the separation of our properties. There is nowhere safely for children to play. Most of us have dogs and pools on our properties. Even with proper signage posted, we are not protected in the event of any unfortunate mishaps should they occur due to trespassers. When I moved here, the city informed me that Maplewood Road was an emergency access road. It concerns me that with the heavy overflow of street parking and congestion, this will seriously hinder the emergency call times to get to someone in need. So what's next? You'll propose a levy to build new schools and ask us to pass and to pay. All the while, our properties are going to be devalued. I'm positive we can come up with a much better solution, not only to accommodate the very constituents that voted in you in office. We, as neighbors and a community, graciously ask you, our council, to reconsider... I apologize. ...the zoning. Please don't break these relationships and bonds we've all formed. I fear that many of us will be displaced and forced from the very homes and properties that we love. We implore you to please reconsider this decision and to hear us on that street especially. We do not want this. Thank you for your time. Good evening.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
My name's Jinglebeak. I live at 131 Maplewood. I've lived there 40 years. My husband's actually lived on Maplewood for 47. We got here in two homes at one point. I'm not one to mince words. I don't have anything formal. I'm just going to lay it out straight on the line. But that's pretty much the way I go. For one thing, when we built the Kroger's at the end of Maplewood, traffic was horrendous. Cars speed down our roads like no tomorrow. There's tons of crime at that Kroger's, everyone knows that. I don't go to that Kroger's. I'm afraid to go to that Kroger's. I'm afraid to go to our Walmart. If you go down to Main and Maplewood, down right past the railroad tracks, tons of prostitution. You see them every day. To build a apartment complex there where there would be children is unheard of in my mind. There's a lot of crime down there. It's not suitable for family living right on that corner. Not to mention the resource down through my house is a well-known drug house. I know this because I've talked to them. I'm not working. I sit on my front porch. I can tell you the schedule of the people that come and go from that house, leave with their brown bag of drugs. I've had them go through my garbage. I've had to stop them from going through my neighbor's garbage, looking for things. If this complex goes up, my fear is that this trouble's just going to get stronger and stronger. At one point, there was supposed to be a retaining wall built between Napoleon and Maplewood along the back separation of our properties. It never happened. I can't tell you countless times we've got bullet holes in the back of our house from Napoleon. This place reports fire, I called. They've got the slugs. I had to dig them out of my wall. And that's my daughter's bedroom upstairs. How much more crime does Maplewood have to endure at your guys' pocketbook? It's about dollars and cents right now. It's not about our safety on Maplewood. And if you don't believe me, come and sit on my front porch one evening. Hear the gunshots that go off on my street every night. Every night. It's never-ending. So do you guys think this is a good idea for Whitehall? It may benefit your pockets, but it's not ours. Because I can guarantee, I'm not going to just speak for me, but I'm going to speak for these folks as well. Before our property values start going down, which Ken has been wonderful to build Whitehall up, and our values have gone up. But all of this buildup is not on our side of town. It's on the other side of town. Our values are going to drop. And I can tell you what you're going to see for sell signs. And I can tell you what, we get letters, calls, texts, and emails constantly, people wanting to pay cash for our homes. You know who's going to buy them? People that's going to turn around and rent them to low-income Section 8 welfare homes. So Maplewood will go downhill and be nothing but trash property. And if that's what you guys want, if that's where you want your dollars spent, more power to you. But I've been there 40 years. I've seen a lot. I've seen a lot. And this just isn't a good idea. Thank for your time.
Excuse me, everyone. Oh, no, please come forward. But before this next gentleman speaks, if I could just ask our guests to keep the side conversations down out of courtesy to our speakers so we can all clearly hear them, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. President, if I could, I just, just for the, for the record, if there are people who want to come up, that's fine. But typically speaking, if their comments are related to the public hearing, you've asked them to wait until then so that they don't, so that they don't have to adhere to the three-minute rule. And so I didn't know if there are people who want to talk to things outside of the public hearing. Maybe that would be the opportunity, now would be that opportunity.
Because as I mentioned earlier, you do have the opportunity.
I just thought maybe I would, I would offer that, that if people want to talk in the public hearing, that would be the opportunity to do it. I, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Sorry.
You're fine. My name is Russell Robinson. I live at 397 Collingwood. I actually, I didn't come to speak at all. I just came to spectators. To see all the, all the faces here and everyone that's come out and entered. But it's, for me personally, I've, I've lived in Whitehall here for several years. And some of the comments and some of the perceptions of some of our wonderful citizens here, I've actually, I've actually been in the crossfire of a lot of the perceptions of the crime and some of the things that have gone on in the neighborhood. So for, for me, I know that change is, is, can be a great thing if you're, if you're accepting and willing to it. I, I also know that being accepting, community-oriented, having, having a situation where people who come into the community feel as if they're a part of it, I think that that's important. The numbers that, that were reflective of the budget, I noticed for fire and police, opposed to like some of the parks and recreation, some of the other things going on in the city, I, I would think that things could be adjusted in a way that people in the community would feel more involved, maybe. I know that crime and, you know, things that you see on the news and the perception of feeling safe and being a part of a community and like-mindedness, I think that the way that you go about your relationship with your neighbors and the people around you, your community stores, saying hi, waving to people, being kind, you know, just having that involvement with people. It's something that I try to do personally. I come from a small town where everyone knows each other. And I kind of, kind of operate within that small realm here in Whitehall. But what I've noticed is, is even, even doing that, I've, I've ran into situations where I have felt like a criminal in my community here. I have been in my own yard more than once. I have been at gunpoint in my, in my own yard doing yard work and saying that I appear to be fleeing. I've been put in handcuffs for the first time in my life. The first time in my life was I was put in handcuffs by a Whitehall police officer in front of my child. I, I'm a teacher. I work with kids. I've always worked in the community. I've worked for Columbus Parks and Rec. I've volunteered in coaching. I volunteer, I coach now. But somehow, me just being who I am, the way that I look, somehow, I've, I've encountered these instances several times here in Whitehall. I love Whitehall. There, there are fabulous things happening. Since I have moved to Whitehall, the building, there have been fabulous things. I took my entire family to the police, uh, police station to try to introduce myself to the police officers so I wouldn't be a stranger to police officers. And I still had an encounter the next week where I was at gunpoint. And, and for me, I know that these things happen. I know that there's police shootings. I know that there are horrible people in this world. But I, I just, I just wonder, what can we do differently here in Whitehall at this beautiful, wonderful place that we don't, that our citizens don't feel like there's crime all around them? I live right, I live, I live close to the, the woman that was up there speaking. I would, I would love to know her better. But there's something about our community where you, 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 it's a kind of, not a standoffish thing. One more thing, I have a neighbor on this side and then a neighbor on this side. This neighbor has lived with me for years. I have another neighbor that comes in and he's, and he's open to me. This neighbor, I've never been in the house with their ears. This neighbor, warm and open. I, I mean, I like both guys, both, both neighbors. But it's, it's the approach of the human spirit and the way that you're warm and accepting that will allow for this, this beautiful place to thrive and be the wonderful place it is by just trying to be a little bit more accepting.
Forgive me, I've never done anything like this before.
You'll be fine.
Yeah. My name's Elizabeth Spears. My husband is James Robinson. We bought a property at 697 Maplewood about four years ago. First house, never wanted to own a home, so this was a whole new experience. Bought the house, was completely embraced by my neighbors. Still so grateful for that because we have a special-needs child-in-the-house home, older father, so felt safe and welcome. Couple of things about the apartments that I have concerns about. Property value going down. I'm new to learning these things, but after doing some research, it's there, it shows. Traffic is already heavy. I love... I love Halloween, I'm excited about it. Couldn't believe how fast cars were going in and out with these babies rolling around. Now you're gonna add an apartment complex, which is also gonna add to that. Um, where's everybody gonna park? I know that's been said. Um, there's nothing on that side of town for families and children. And I work, I'm a nurse at Children's Hospital. I see what inner-city things do. I see what is not there for these families to have to do. The other day, I went down the street to get something and there was a group of pre-teen adolescents that threw rocks at my car because they were jaywalking. It's in the middle of the day, there's nothing that they're gonna do. We're now gonna add another area for children to not have something to do. Um, I live three houses down from this new development, as we've already said. Um, if you lived in this area, would you want these right by your property? Whitehall schools are already overcrowded, overfunded. Where are you gonna send these kids to school? Have them sitting in trailers? Where are these buses gonna go? Uh, sorry. Um, is there enough emergency help such as ambulances, police, city workers? That being said, my father was possibly having a heart attack for the first time. I called 911. 911 had to go through the city of Columbus and then I had to be put on hold to get to Whitehall. So imagine that fear, now we're gonna add a whole nother element. You've already built two other places on Broad Street that we're now gonna have to compete with? Now I have to compete three houses down from me for the safety of my family? Not fair. Another concern is I'm pretty sure we definitely need affordable housing. Those families need help, they want a safe place to live. I'm sure when they build Napoleon and Wyatt Apartments, because I used to live right there on Napoleon and Wyatt. I grew up, I went to Eastmore, I've lived in this whole block radius my entire life. I'm sure when those were built, the idea was for those to be safe homes. It is now not, like the woman said about the bullets. Every night I'm sitting outside, I'm hearing gunshots. Um, U-Haul's alarm is constantly going off. So now I have to compete to, with three houses down for more apartments that may or may not, and no, not everybody in there are gonna be crime victims. No, that's not the case. There's gonna be families in there that wanna be safe. But we all know that those elements are accessible and easy to get into, especially with people being stressed because of COVID. Not getting jobs, not those things. So what do people do? They take the easy way out. No, that's not right, but it is what it is. You know, I work nights and evenings to take care of my family. I don't wanna have to be at work to worry about what's going on in my home. I've earned that rate. I bought that property, I don't want this affecting my neighbors, my loved ones, and this, that, and the other for something that in the end will not benefit those families and children sitting in that building. There's nothing to do. Whitehall, this Walmart, I was so excited because I lived on Hampton my entire life. I'm, oh God, we're getting a Walmart. That is known as ghetto mart. There is no doubt about it, there's no, I mean, it's all over Facebook and everything. There's, there's nothing to build up, there's nothing to look forward to. So with this apartment complex, I have several issues to concern about that. And again, I will end it with this. If this, you lived three houses down from this apartment complex, would you want this near you? I guarantee you, you would not. Thank you for your time.
Folks, again, you can speak to this at the public hearing. You're more than welcome to talk now, but there will be time at the public hearing.
Appreciate that. We weren't, we were at the planning commission meeting and weren't heard then. They all voted yes, with the, all the people that came up were all negative against it. Nobody stood for us. Nobody stands for the citizens.
Ma'am, before you go for the name and address, let me-
I'm sorry, my name is Tassie Holmes. I live at 689 Maplewood. And, uh, I'm just, I wanna bring about that, the Woda Cooper companies have misled. Mr. Cooper came before the board and he misled about his company with, um, the offenders in their apartment complexes. It's a, they said they wouldn't, they would, you know, do a background check. They can't keep them out. It's illegal. It's against the law. He said we would background check, so he kinda tried to skim over. He knew it's against the law to discriminate against those people. That's, that's not, you know, anything, you know, they need a place to live too. The biggest problem I see with the thing is that property management. I've looked up their company. They can't keep managers in the apartments and the complexes they already have. They don't have managers, they have problems, and they aren't fixing them. So we're gonna get somebody in there and then they can't get a manager, you know, in a complex. Oh, I'm gonna live across in the place that they're trying to put this, right across the street from a junkyard. Now, they're saying they're gonna be gauged on how much, you know, they pay whatever they can afford type thing, which there'll be some higher-income people that, you know, pay a little more for their apartment and stuff. Who's gonna pay more for an apartment looking over a junkyard? Or watching prostitutes or drug deals going down in front of their building? As my neighbor and friend said, that there's no place for the children to play. They never brought up a, a little playground. And how bored do your kids get or grandkids get at a playground? Five, ten minutes? And then they're off, you know, looking for something else? Teenagers, there's nothing for them on those corners other than the drugs, prostitution going on there on Main Street. And then we also have to deal with Columbus already, with Barnett right there, and then also Napoleon, as it's been said. We ha, we already have a lot of problems there. Why bring those children and those families into that? Now, Whitehall owns the property over at Woodcliff. It's right next to Park. Why couldn't they build the building there? Let them build the building. Whitehall gets the money from leasing the property to the company. It's a beautiful complex. They have a park there, the kids would be safe. We're gonna overcrowd the schools with all these kids? You're already wanting us to raise taxes again or raise money? Because right after those schools were built, they weren't big enough to handle what we have already. Now you wanna bring a hundred-and-two-unit property there? That, how, think about it, isn't that crazy? And then I was, you know, saw where the mayor told somebody that, oh, they're only gonna put a little bit more water in the system. It's already overflowing. I have friends and neighbors that, one of them, their water came all the way to their top step into, uh, coming into their first floor. That's how bad our water system is fixed at. Why put all this money, you know, you're into the beautifying Main Street? And what happens to these lots? I watch people cross the street, thank God, our, our property doesn't flood. We're right across the street and the neighbors, I saw them bringing out tons of things. Memorabilia, pictures, everything, because they were flooded. They had their antique grandmother's sewing machines, they, everything out there, desks, everything they had down in the basement was flooded. These problems can, you know, keep going and you're gonna add more to it. Oh no, it's not gonna add just a little bit? Okay, you got a cup and you poured water to the top, oh, just a little bit more won't hurt? It overflows, doesn't it? We've already got overflowing. We don't need more of that on our street. Also, the parking. They brought up, the, Mr. Cooper brought up about the parking. There's enough parking in that, that complex for 1.3 vehicles. Okay, I'm sorry, but most, if you look at the statistics, most people have at least two cars. Okay, you got a hundred, he said something about 139 parking spaces.
Have you, you've gone over your three minutes, if you want to cut?
This was the, oh, I have.
You can probably wrap it up, quickly.
Okay, but the parking, we have at least sixty more parked, cars needing parked along the street. There isn't enough, they'd be all the way up five, six houses or more down to park. And then shootings over the parking spaces or fights. They don't need that. Just, we just don't want this in our neighborhood. And we hope that you will listen to us, since the zoning and planning commission didn't. We, you know, we want, we're asking you, we do not want this. And, you know, we hope that you hear us, because you haven't heard before. We've tried. Thank you.
Thank you. So folks, is there a particular reason, because again, if you, if we wait to the public hearing, you could, you don't have the three-minute limit. It's tonight, it's, it's on the agenda. It's coming up tonight. So I mean, you're, you're more than welcome to speak.
Well, last time I was here, I don't believe anybody paid much attention to what we had to say.
Sir, if you are to-
My name is Kirby Holmes.
Thank you.
And that lady back there is my wife.
And you're with us?
And I live at 689 Maplewood.
Okay.
And I wanna know, when you put this up, which one of you gonna be brave enough to buy my house and live right there?
Folks, this, this is that topic same. Please continue.
But I, I like to know, you know, I mean, would you wanna live there next to that? I was pulling in from work, I come in the middle of the night, and I look at the two-story one right on the other side of the thunderman. And I look at the building right there on the corner that's there now, and all I can see is, what'd they call that? Uzi Alley? All over again, right there, shooting right past the, you know, I mean, there's a lot of dope around there. I'm a recovering alcoholic, been so for twenty-four years, and I thank God for it, you know? Thank God very much. And, and, uh, I just wanna move. I don't want no part of it. I think it's the dumbest thing ever. When I bought the house, I thought, man, I love it, I love it, and I still love it. And I thought, this house will outlast me. No worries. You've even sent my lazy boy.
I think I do remember that.
I wasn't there, you were lucky.
Yeah.
My wife let you in.
I was there for a long time too, at least,
I don't know.
At least thirty to forty-five minutes. We talked a lot. We talked, talked here, yeah.
Uh, uh, where am I here? But anyhow, folks, I, I love my house and I thought I'd live and die there. But all I wanna do is move. That's how I feel about your project. I thought you done went back crazy when you put the flowers and trees down the middle of the Main Street. I thought, man, that's just crazy, because your workers have to get out in the street and work right there and risk getting run over. I mean, plant trees in your backyard, come on, you know? But this, this really is icing on the cake. That's. And, um, I'm totally against it. And I just wanted you to know that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, at this point, I'm gonna move on to standing committee reports. Administration, Financial Management. Chairperson Baylor's not with us this evening, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our, uh, excuse me, uh, Administration and Financial Management met last Tuesday, minutes are on file. We'll meet again next Tuesday, sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Community and Elder Advocacy met last week, our minutes are on file. We have no pending or draft legislation. We meet again on next Tuesday at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Economic Development? I'm sorry, Community Standards Enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez.
Hi there. Uh, Community Standards Enforcement also met last Tuesday, minutes are on file. And we'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Very good. Economic Development, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development also met last Tuesday, our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance Services, Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure Maintenance Services met last Tuesday, our minutes are on file. We have no draft or pending legislation. We did have a presentation about the findings, I'm sure, but that was all.
Thank you. Public Safety, Chairperson Coniston.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety also met last week, our minutes are on file. We'll meet again, uh, next week around 6:30.
Very good. Parks and Recreation, Chairperson Kanter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation met last week, our minutes are on file. There's no draft pending legislation. I did talk about the farmer's market that's going on every Tuesday night. Truly a nice success, gotta go check it out over at Kelly Green. And our music in the park's also kicking off this year, and we had a really good turnout. And we can go Friday. We'll meet again in the back next week after 6:30.
Thank you. At this time, we, be our official reports. Mary Kim Bagger.
Good evening. Uh, I would just like to remind everybody about the park party, uh, tomorrow. I believe it's from five to seven at Norton Park in the Norton Field subdivision. I would ask, also ask for favorable consideration on Orders 43, 46, 48, and Resolution Number 16. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Bivins.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Um, before I begin, uh, what's going on in the City Attorney's Office, two things, uh, kind of a habit was formed with me during the pandemic, uh, which is, one, appreciation and secondarily gratitude. And I want to say, just because it's been a long time since I've been in a room like this with people like you and in our community, how appreciative and how grateful I am to see each and every one of your faces. Um, I love this city, I'm so privileged and honored to be your city attorney. And I just, uh, want you to know how appreciative and grateful I am that you're here tonight. And I invite you back on a number of city council meetings that are coming up in the future, because we do a lot of great things here in our, in city council. And you deserve to be here present and live, uh, like you are right now. So please come back at some future time. But from the City Attorney's Office, I wanted to just update, uh, you, Mr. President, members of council, as well as to the public. We are still currently, uh, reviewing applications for our paralegal. As you know, our paralegal, Kristin Lippert, um, is going on to bigger, better things. Uh, she'll be going to law school. I guess somehow we inspired her in the City Attorney's Office that she wanted to be an attorney. So she's going off to, uh, to pursue her big dream of becoming a lawyer. But that leaves a hole with us, and we've received over fifty applications, uh, so far, uh, for the City Attorney's Office. So that's a, that's a gold star for, for our office. Lets me know that we're doing something right in the city of Whitehall, that people actually wanna come work in, in the city and wanna come work, uh, for me as, as the city attorney. That being said, uh, I have been, uh, selected to represent the city of Whitehall from the African-American Male Wellness Agency to be its ambassador for health and fitness. Uh, that being said, it had, it had all to do with the diversion program that was initiated in the City Attorney's Office. So that you know, members of the public, the City Attorney's Office initiated a diversion program that's more organic, more outreach-oriented. We actually have diversion specialists that are in our mayor's court every Tuesday, and they get to meet defendants in real time. So far, that program has been so successful that we've had a zero percent recidivism rate of all the individuals that have gone through that program. So I was recognized as a result of this agency for being a health hero. As it relates to that, I will say, and I'm just gonna say, it's because I can run a twenty-two-minute, thirty-minute, three miles, and I'll be fifty years old in July, but that's not the reason.
Rub it in, rub it in.
I do, I have to rub it in, because I'm proud of that, being almost fifty, that I can do that.
That's pretty good.
So you can clap on that if you want to. That's it. Last, but certainly not least, um, well, no, not, next to last. Um, this Saturday, June the nineteenth, uh, it's known by many names. It's known as Jubilee Day, it's known as Freedom Day. Um, but we celebrate it in the United States, we call it Juneteenth. Um, it was initiated in eighteen sixty-five. You are all welcome to celebrate the Juneteenth Celebration, which is the actual Independence Day for the United States of America, which commemorates the end of slavery in the United States. It's this Saturday, you can find any program throughout the city of Columbus, but celebrate that. Now, last, but not least, there's a young man that's sitting back in the back corner who is the son of Whitehall, that I would be remiss if I did not recognize him. He's a product of Whitehall City Schools. He's a product of Otterbyne College graduate. And this young man has just recently moved back to the city of Whitehall. He loves this city so much that he moved back. And, I just have to say this because it's such an amazing feat, he passed the CPA exam on the very first try as a product of Whitehall City Schools. I'm so happy to see you, my friend. I'm looking for great things coming from you in the future. And that's it, City Attorney. That's it, Shaquille Ryan Kanter, I said it's folding.
I know this young man. My son was doing orientation, he popped out at the classroom in Otterbyne and came out and greeted us. Thank you very much. He just graduated too, thanks.
Mr. Bivins, that's your full report?
That's my full report, thank you, Mr. President.
Very, very nice report, sir. Uh, Auditor Dan Miller's not with us this evening. He did share with me earlier that they had no, uh, report to present. Uh, Director of Development and Public Service, Director Woodrow.
I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Uh, our Director of Public Safety, Van Greg, is not with us this evening, nor is our Treasurer, Steve Quensel. Uh, the following official reports have been filed in the City Council office since our last meeting. We have four items, uh, those being the auditor's expense report for May 2021, the auditor's bank report for May 2021, the auditor's statement of cash position report for May 2021, the auditor's revenue report for May 2021. Under Communications, Petitions, and Claims, we have one item listed, and that's our minutes for the June third, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. I will now open our first public hearing, but before I do so, I wanna kinda walk down how that works. Um, I will open it and I will ask the applicant to come forward and please present their information. I'll then ask if there's a city, uh, staff report they would like to present. Um, obviously, we'll want input from council, any questions that they have got of the applicant or of the city. Um, and then if there are any opponents, I will then ask at that point, which looks like most of you folks have already spoken to that, but if there are any other- but if there are any other opponents who would like to come forward, we'll certainly welcome and encourage you to come forward. And then any proponents, um, in the audience would like to come in favor of it. And then I will close that public hearing. And we've actually got two public hearings, um, about this property. So with that said, uh, I'm going to open public hearing on Orders Forty-six, twenty-twenty-one, which is amending the zoning map attached to Chapter eleven-twenty-one of the nineteen-seventy codified ordinances of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, and has subsequently amended, changed the zoning on property located at thirty-four fifty East Main Street and seven thirty-nine and seven twenty-one Maplewood Avenue. Partial numbers, zero-nine-zero, zero-zero-two, one-twenty-two, zero-nine-zero, zero-zero-one, eight-ninety, zero-nine-zero, zero-zero-three, six-forty, zero-nine-zero, zero-zero-one, nine-hundred, zero-nine-zero, zero-zero-two, four-eighty-five, zero-nine-zero, zero-zero-three, six-thirty-eight, and zero-nine-zero, zero-zero-eight, two-forty, from R-three Residential District and General Commerce District, GCT, GCD, to A-two Apartment District, property owned by Mama Company Incorporated. So as I said, this time I'll open a public hearing on Orders Forty-six, twenty-twenty-one at eight-thirty-two. And I would please ask the applicants to come forward and please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Frank Yogi. Address is five hundred South Front Street, uh, tenth floor, Columbus, Ohio. Thank you for having us. My partner tonight is, uh, Clay Cooper. He's at the same address, uh, five hundred South Front Street. Um, we appreciate this. We appreciate the audience tonight. We're here, we, we, we work for a developer that we build apartment buildings. We're a national company. Um, we're, we're a company that takes pride in what we do. We're a company that, um, our headquarters, again, are here in Columbus. It's important to us that we have a safe, uh, development. Um, we're a company that is vertically integrated. Uh, so Clay and I work in development. There's a construction department and there's a management department. So our company will be a company that will take care of this property. We've been in business now for over thirty years. I've been with the company seventeen years. And we've never sold a property. Uh, it's not, um, a situation that, that's, we, we just don't do it. It's because of compliance, it's because of whole different things. And it's what the owners feel is the best for the community and for our residents. It's consistency.
Excuse me?
Yes?
Could we get him a microphone? I'm sure most people can't hear.
I apologize.
Don't know if that's actually, that's, I don't, we have a mic.
Yeah, it is. It is.
Oh, it is a mic? Okay.
Could you try to speak up?
So anyway, so I'd like to just say that we have, uh, uh, our, we're very invested in our communities. We're invested in Columbus, Whitehall, and different communities. What we'd like to do right now is, uh, uh, present our power.
So the property is called The Enclave on Main and, um, on the first slide. So Frank talked a lot about who we are, but just a little bit more briefly. We have properties in sixteen states. We have over fourteen thousand units. We're based in Columbus, Ohio. And Frank gave a wonderful explanation of who our company is. But there's more about our company. Our company also consists of the residents. And we'd like to share quickly with you a, a video here that shows you residents across several of our family properties, who they are. These are the people that are a part of our company and are going to be a part of Whitehall who are probably already a part of Whitehall. Not getting any volume. Well, we, we noticed that. Try sit, yeah, try switching the speakers. Right there. Up. No, where, where you were, Jenna, where your mouse is. Little up.
I was looking for a place to live. There is nothing to do, nothing. And when we lived here, it was capital and status. You know, it was the best thing that ever. It is a place that was built for families. And we love it here. And we did it right here. Yeah, even for college, it was, it was, it was, it was so, all the way out to school. We worked in this, um, part of the building. Right, it's just a mindset. It can be really good. Everybody's kind of happy. Even though it's, you know, it's, you know, it's always, you know, but what you get for work, you know, you have work at, it's, it's hard.
First, I always think about, especially here, certainly here, horrible housing here. Almost none exists. So when I stumbled on the brand, I, I couldn't find a lower quality.
I believe that ourselves is bringing down the, the quality of our products as well as the amenities that we provide. And you go a long way to help it. We increase their quality of life.
I was in the first place for, I'm going on five years and, and, okay, it's on itself, see?
We were in a place, signed up, and then we could get in because it's a little better than where we were at. More of a community, still later on, a house. I worked for a nice, so I ended up getting home and the sun's just coming off and just get home.
It is very healthy to have a continuum of housing options. It makes it easier to build that, um, basically, to offer a continuum of housing options.
Being able to be in a live work space that is affordable is allowing me to cushion to be able to consume my dreams, but still be, you know, I don't know. But still very glad to be able to be here.
But you know, it is great. You want diverse people and diverse spaces for buildings that are the old building. How popular this boy was, we were located in the old, you know, I don't know.
I don't know. I love it. It's good. My apartment is cheap and quiet and I'm definitely going to, I'm going to sleep tonight.
If you're in local government, if you're an S C N, you're a S R, so your jobs are always scrutinized. If companies come in and offer to provide certain, you know, that relationship is, we're not done. So even though the building, the project is done, it needs to still be meaningful and following, not only from the project aspect, but also from the community itself.
I've been here for eleven months. I actually just found it for another year, but I love it so much here. The park is spacious, like it downsides to come here, but there's still plenty of rooms. There's actually like a, well, and and for everything, there's, there's a nice mix of people here, so to think they're better. It's a beautiful place. That nice man, I just saw him on my balcony, that he is out playing, so that's a place. And that's mine. He sat out and seen that, it's, um, hoping to stay here longer than I don't think.
See, there's more than just Frank and I and this company. It's the residents. That's why we show up to work every day. We want to provide a safe, quality place for people to live. Um, next slide, please. So a little bit about the property. We'll get into kind of the nuts and bolts here. This is the overview of the site plan. You can see, you know, as I said, a planning commission, I'll say here again, we're, we're really using that development blueprint as our guideline here. We're keeping the thirty-five foot setback on the front. We have a twenty foot setback, uh, in front of Main Street, I should say. We have a twenty foot setback on Maplewood. Um, we have one entrance there off of Maplewood. Uh, we have one hundred and thirty-four parking spaces, which we'll touch on a little bit later. Um, and we've, really with, uh, a lot of input from both planning commission and staff, um, we've really tried to incorporate a lot of, uh, great ideas. We have kind of a curving sidewalk. We're going to have a terrace, uh, or plaza area out in front, uh, at the corner of Maplewood and Main Street. We have, uh, kind of these green landscape features on the front that, that will act as a, a bio basin. Um, and, uh, as you can see, we're creating some new, uh, on-street parking, uh, as well, um, in this, um, next slide, please. So these are the elevation, um, on both, uh, the East Main Street elevation and the Maplewood elevation. And again, this concept was done in collaboration with the city. Um, you know, we really tried to have a mix of materials. Uh, you'll see there are two different types of brick. Uh, the other materials are both vertical and horizontal fiber cement, um, siding, uh, you know, plenty of windows, um, and, you know, we've really tried to break up the facade, uh, with those, you know, differing materials. Um, next slide, please. This is a close-up of the corner. You can see that plaza that we're talking about. Because we're keeping that larger setback, we still wanted to engage that corner. It's a very prominent corner. So we're creating this plaza here with benches and seating, uh, to help beautify this corner. Um, next slide, please. And then this is the look-down Maplewood. Again, to engage the street, um, we wanted to make sure that we added, uh, some sort of entrance to the first four units here, just so it wasn't one, you know, straight facade. Um, so we, so we made sure to add that to engage the street in collaboration, again, with the city. Next slide, please. So about the enclave on Main, you guys have heard it. It's a hundred and two units. There are sixteen one bedrooms, sixty-three two bedrooms, twenty-three three bedrooms, one hundred and thirty-four spaces. Uh, it's for ample landscaping. Uh, I know that, uh, you know, buffering to different properties is a big concern. Um, and we're trying to, uh, accomplish that through landscape buffers, through dense landscaping berms, um, in the back and rear of the property. It'll both help, you know, keep people out of other people's yards, uh, it's, it's, you know, much more, you know, aesthetically pleasing, uh, but also can block, uh, traffic, you know, any sort of headlights, uh, from the parking lot as well. So that's our goal, uh, with the landscaping. Again, I touched on the plaza at the front entrance, the new on-street parking, um, and those landscape features as well. Uh, next slide, please. Thank you. So a little bit more about parking. Um, again, a hundred and thirty-four spaces for a hundred and two units, about one point three. Uh, the goal of keeping this parking to a hundred and thirty-four is not only supported by the National Apartments Association Study, which has shown that in twenty sixteen, they did a study from two thousand and six to twenty sixteen, that the, uh, average for mid-rise building, which a four-story building is generally categorized as a mid, mid-rise, um, dropped from one point three-five spaces per unit down to one point two-seven. So we're right within that range of the U.S. national average during that ten-year period that they, they surveyed. Um, but, but more than that, um, you know, I talked about that landscape buffer. We're trying to keep it because, you know, we can, when we add more parking, it eliminates that landscape buffer. It eliminates that distance between the neighbors, um, that we're trying to keep. So that was another reason, uh, for this parking number. Um, and, and again, this is a transit-oriented development. There's a, a major bus line there. Um, we actually applied for funding from Franklin County. And, uh, the, one of their scoring elements for that funding, um, is being on a tier-one transit corridor in Franklin County and just qualified as that. So, uh, it's what they're considering, one of the, the biggest transit corridors here in Franklin County. So, um, and we believe in more, you know, walkable, bikeable communities, uh, and we believe that this is the first step in, in developing that here on this corner. Um, and I gave a couple of examples of some projects that we have here in Columbus that, um, that, uh, Atkinson Place Loss is currently under construction. It's eighty units of seventy-four parking spaces, and these are both general occupancy buildings, just like, uh, the one we're proposing here. And then the Livingston, um, which is the old Livingston Theater, if anyone's familiar with that, um, we did, uh, partial renovation of that and then some new construction. That is forty-five units and thirty-seven smart parking spaces. So, um, you know, the, the trend that we're seeing in more urban areas is fewer parking. Um, I've worked in some other cities where we proposed a forty-nine unit development and the maximum number of parking we could do is twenty-four spaces. So, um, the, the general trend in the more urban areas, transit-oriented development areas, we're seeing is less parking. Um, but we are right on that national average at, at about one point three, so, for a mid-rise building. Another question we get a lot is, where do people come from? Are these people, you know, coming from all over the place? And so we looked at, um, three properties we have here in Columbus, Fairwood Commons, Wendler Commons, and the Livingston. Um, I did a quick measure on Google Maps and I saw that, uh, I think Whitehall had about its widest point is just under three miles. So we took kind of that distance and we said, what percentage of people on the waiting list, um, are within three miles of these properties? Fairwood Commons, that's seventy-eight percent of people on the waitlist for that property come from within three miles. Sixty-five percent of the people on the waitlist for Wendler Commons, which is, um, actually out more towards east end, uh, come from either the same zip code or the immediately adjacent zip code on that waitlist. And then Livingston, as you can see here, seventy-one percent of people on that waitlist are within three miles. So these are your neighbors already. These are people that are in Whitehall that are working folks. So with that, I'd like to open up to any questions. I believe, um, stat, I think you said the staff report was, was next.
Correct, as well as any questions on council thus far.
Hundred and thirty-four spaces. Where are the handicap spaces and how many? Are these just right here in the corner?
Right here.
That's what I'm saying. We're just right here in the corner, five?
Yes, sir. And that's, uh, I believe to, to code the number of spaces that we need.
Are there going to be any amenities?
Yeah, so we'll, um, we have, uh, a community room. We have, uh, a lot of times a, a community fitness center, I believe, is in this. Um, we have, uh, you know, um, laundry facility and,
Top lot.
Uh, top lot.
And, and we provide the,
Uh, top lot. It's going to be a small playground.
Oh, okay, that was going to happen.
Indoor?
Uh, it'll be outdoor. Uh, it's not reflected on that, that plan, but it is.
Where abouts will that be located? Jenna, will you pull back up the site plan?
Yeah.
Sorry, Julie.
We're currently working with the architects. We'd like to incorporate it a little closer towards the building, um, kind of in the corner there. But we're, we're currently, uh, slightly adapting this plan to.
It'd be nice to see what you're actually wanting to do.
Yeah. So, it'll, it'll, it'll be, um, you know, towards the front of the property there. Um, towards the north end of the building, uh, page, page up on there, uh, by parking lot, so is where we're looking.
Excuse me, a guest, if you could, please, out of respect for our speakers, if you could take any, all of your side discussions.
So where's it going to be starting?
Yeah, so we're, we're trying to incorporate it, um, either in the corner there, right outside that, where the, that entrance is, or up near the, uh, the, the north end of that building, uh, the, the L's, uh, kind of page north, um, where there's some green space by the parking lot.
You're talking the entrance, the front entrance on Main Street?
Yeah, but, but the side of the building, yeah, if you go up, yeah, right in there. There's some green space there that can be incorporated as well.
Well, if you understand.
Yes, we always touch, um, those towers.
So is, is that space going to be similar to anything in which you showed on your,
Absolutely.
Previous places for slides, swing, and things of that nature, because?
No.
You know, previously, we've seen nothing on it.
Playground there.
Yes, um, that's, we have a standard selection. We, we order from the same company. Um, they're just different models, um, different aesthetics, so.
But we don't know that.
Sure. We can, we can provide, generally on the plan, it's a little circle. It's, it's barely visible what it, what it is.
A better set of plans would have been helpful.
Sure. Yes, sir.
What about security?
Yeah, so we have a very, uh, intense screening process. Um, that's kind of where security starts. So, uh, again, uh, we do background checks. Violent offenders, sex offenders cannot live, that, cannot live in these communities. They have to pass that background check. Um, that's, that's what, what happens. Um, and then, uh, we also, uh, do credit checks and previous landlord checks. So that's the first step in the background check process, uh, to move in. And then we'll also have a community manager five days a week on site, as well as a service technician five days a week on site. We, uh, most of our, uh, newer developments, including this one, have, um, kind of FOB entry into the building. So you have to, you know, it's a secure access to the building. Um, residents will have, Um, residents will have a, a call, um, in their room, um, that, you know, they can allow guests in, um, so there's that, and then there are cameras, not only outside of the building, but inside of the building.
So you have onsite, onsite security, individual security?
We, we, we don't hire individual security, that's relatively uncommon, um, for apartment developments, um, but, uh, you know, we, we always welcome, you know, local police to, to come and, and sit in the lot, gun people down the street, we have no, no issue with that, but, um, in, in, in general, you know, we don't see a lot of crime in, in these properties, these are hard-working, you know, folks in the community.
Your managers onsite twenty-four seven?
Uh, five days a week.
Five days a week.
I see, like, during the week, you say five days a week, is that normally just like a Monday through Friday thing?
Yes, it's a Monday through Friday, and then if there's a service issue, we have a service technician on call as well.
Twenty-four hours?
Yes.
The five days a week, is that twenty-four hours, or is that eight to five, or?
Yeah, it's relatively normal business hours, eight to five, eight to six, um, that, that range, yes, sir. And, and I know, I've talked to a lot of community managers, residents, you know, they'll give their cellphone out to, to residents there, um, you know, if they need help, I, I've def- I've heard several stories where, where that rings true.
Back to the play area, approximately what's gonna be the square footage and what type of equipment are you gonna have for, uh, a hundred and two units with possible children in every one?
I'm sorry, what, what do you mean by equipment?
Slide swings?
Yeah, it'll, it'll have a, it'll have a, a slide, uh, maybe, maybe a little swing, it's, it's a relatively, in more, kind of dense areas, it's a smaller playground. And then the community room as well, um, will have that where people can reserve it like any other apartment building or whole birthday parties, um, and a small fitness ring as well.
On the north end of the property, uh, adjacent to the residential property, what, how, you say you're gonna have vegetation there, uh, and no privacy fence of any type to keep people...
Yeah, we, we, if, if a privacy fence is wanted, we're happy to pull one up, but we're trying to, to do that through the landscape buffer, through that dense vegetation you see around the entire, um, property, and we're keeping, you know, we're trying to preserve also the, the mature vegetation and trees that already exist as well.
Understand that, but that vegetation, uh, is not evergreen, so you're go- in the wintertime, you're not gonna have the same coverage as you do in the summertime.
Sure, and we can, and, uh, we can incorporate, uh, evergreen, more evergreen plantings in, um, to help screen that, and, uh, a landscape, you know, an actual physical berm has also been discussed, um, that we'd be happy to put in as well, or a fence. Uh, we, we prefer going with the natural, uh, you know, vegetative look, um, but putting in a privacy fence is, is not an issue either, it's...
What kind of berm are you talking about? Height? You said some kind of berm, what, what do you mean by berm?
Uh, it's literally bringing in dirt to create, um, a, a berm there, uh, uh, you know, it'll, it'll be...
Kind of specific height?
With plantings on it, yeah, a specific height, um, with plantings, grass on it as well.
So what's the distance from, uh, this building to the next property line north of it?
I do not know that off the top of my head, um, I believe we're well, you can see the setback line required by code there, and we're, you know, we're, you know, probably another thirty feet or so past that.
One of the concerns of, of the ma- adjacent neighbor was the height of the building and, and I'm seeing into their lawn, uh, there is vegetation there and it's pretty dense, I was by there, but like I say, that's summer coverage, that's not winter coverage.
Yeah, um, the development blueprint actually calls for a six-to-twelve story building, um, and so we decided to go with a four-story building to lessen that intensity. Uh, again, we're using that, that high-density, um, and, and multifamily's, uh, permitted use of, as well, under that, uh, that high-density mixed-use, um, corner here, so, uh, and, and again, same thing with the setbacks, we're, we're, the setbacks they recommend in that plan are zero to twenty feet, um, along your front, front entrance, which would be Maplewood in this case, so we went with twenty feet to try, again, to be less intense than what's recommended by the plan. Um, parking, they say, they, you know, to encourage shared parking, there's not a specific parking, you know, requirement stated in the development blueprint, but, you know, we're, we originally actually looked at one-to-one parking, um, our management company said, um, you know, one point three is, is the perfect number, um, and that's, that's what we went with, so...
How many parking spaces are you proposing on the street itself on Maplewood?
Nine, so for a total of a hundred and forty-three new spaces.
And the first spaces, how far from, uh, Main Street corner?
Um, I, again, I don't know the dimension off the top of my head, um, at Planning Commission, um, we discussed, uh, if it is too close, that we could eliminate the first three spots, um, so that it would, we can only have six more spaces, uh, and to not interfere with those turn lanes there on Maplewood and Main Street.
So that would give you a total of approximately a hundred and forty spaces?
Correct.
And would, obviously, the, the ones on the street would be first come, first served?
Yes, sir.
I would just, would have appreciated a better updated layout of what you're proposing here, you're saying, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, but we can't see it.
Yeah, apologies for that, you know, we, um, we're, right now, the, you know, it's hard, you can't quite depict the landscape buffer on the site plan, um, super well, so we apologize for that, and, uh, you know, again, we're trying to take in the, the community feedback of, of providing those amenities, um, and so we would, you know, we gladly are gonna take the input of staff as we move forward, uh, work towards building, uh, permits to make sure that it is acceptable to...
We're trying to make a decision here for this community and we don't have proper documentation, is my point. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just, I just wanna make sure I understand all this. So the building itself has one entry?
It'll have two, uh, actually three. Um, so you can see, there's a, there's a main entrance, uh, at the corner of, uh, Maplewood and Main, and then there's another community...
Jenna, Jenna, we go to the next slide. There you go, that's it.
So, yeah, there's the main entrance, then the top elevation, there's...
Where the arch is?
Yeah, where the arch is, then the bottom elevation, you can kind of see the, the duplicated appearance there with the arch, and then actually on the back of the building, the parking lot, there's another entrance, and then, um, those ground floor units, I believe there are about seven or eight of them, they all have their own ground floor as well.
Private entrance?
And they have kind of a key holder, a phone...
Correct, yeah, it's an electronic key, correct, to get in.
Somebody mentioned, uh, in the comments earlier about, uh, I think someone said section eight. I mean, this is not, can, can you, can you tell us...
This is not section eight.
No, can you explain how the, uh, rent is going to be configured, I mean...
Yeah, people have to pay their rent, it's, it's again, based on income.
Is that right? It's not, it's not, you know, Jerry, you only make ten thousand dollars a year, you, you only pay fifty bucks a month, and, you know, I make fifty thousand, so I pay five hundred a month.
Yeah, it is income-based, that is correct.
Is that broke down on the, on how many bedrooms?
No, so, it's, it's a mi- it's mixed throughout all the bedrooms, there's no, um, I, we have, we have different income breakdowns, we have people making as, as little as thirty percent area median income up to eighty percent. So to give you an example, um, and the average person has to be at sixty percent area median income, so that average person, um, a single person can make, and live in the unit, can make up to thirty-five thousand dollars a year in income qualify, that's the average. Uh, that same person at eighty percent is almost forty-seven thousand a year. A family of four, uh, the average is fifty thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty dollars, and that same family of four, the eighty percent is sixty-seven thousand, just, just above sixty-seven thousand a year.
On your one bedroom, what's the least amount somebody would pay rent?
Yeah, it's, uh, three-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars.
And how many units do you have in the one bedroom, since you have sixteen overall?
We have sixteen, and we have twenty-one total thirty percent units.
So you're in, go ahead.
Do you have that broke down, like, one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom? No, okay.
Okay. So your, your price point regarding affordable housing is based upon the standard?
Yes.
And you're s- and, and the median or the income that is, is thirty-five thousand to forty-seven thousand, which is the median income in Whitehall?
Yes.
So can you break down, can you basically kind of, um, so you said, it's gonna go by income, but it's for affordable housing, it's not section eight, is that what you stated?
Correct, this is not section eight housing.
Isn't it considered one-four housing?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. And again, that thirty percent person is a, it's a part-time waiter, um, that, I mean, that's, that's who is gonna be a thirty percent unit, those, I mean, forty-six thousand is, again, that one person eighty percent, uh, the median, um, starting salary for where I graduated from is forty-two thousand. And those are, I, I graduated from a small school in Minnesota, but, uh, you know, that's a, that's a recent Ohio State grad that can move in, I mean, these are, again, people in the community, um...
They are working people.
Working, they're, you know, they have to pay rent, if they don't pay rent, they, you know, there's an eviction process, right, um, so...
Do you have to work to live there, sorry?
I mean, you don't have to work if you, uh, if you have social security, for example, right?
Verifiable income.
Yeah, some sort of verifiable income, yeah, you, you can, yeah, you have to income qualify, you have to pass your credit check.
You have to have income.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, some sort of income, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I want.
Yeah, they, they have to have a way to pay rent, they have to pass the credit
Um, so with the playground, how, like, is that up kept and stuff? Cause a lot of things I see, not necessarily in yours or in Whitehall, but I see, um, the playgrounds kind of go downhill, they're not being taken care of, like, how do you manage the playground to make sure it's always safe and accommodating?
Yeah, I think this is, I think this goes to the entire property, right? You don't want any part of the property to deteriorate over time, so, that, I mean, we're long-term owners, so we're gonna build to a higher standard than your average developer, we're, um, you know, we're lo- we're, we're here in the community forever, i- if the building's falling apart, we're owning it long-term, that's not good for us, we're not gonna lease it, we have that incentive, so we, the, the way we recapitalize, A, there's, there's, you know, an operating budget, uh, for maintenance, that's, you know, a part of this, um, for, for yearly maintenance of, of the grounds, of the building itself, um, but also, um, you know, these properties then become re-eligible to apply for the tax credits, and we will reapply, that's what we do with some of our older properties, um, to recapitalize them and redo them. So we're always looking for innovative ways to, to rehab our existing properties and create new, um, and again, we're, we're a local developer, if, if the city has any issue with us, we're, we're down the street, you know, like, uh, it, it's an ongoing partnership between us and the community, if we're not meeting your standards, you know, you come, call me, call my office, that, we're a vertically integrated company, you know, I can talk directly with our management, we will absolutely get it up to the standard it needs to be. Um, that's what we pride ourselves on, there's a, there's an anecdotal story, but, um, you know, there was a, a, a property when we were first starting, and our two owners, uh, the lawn mowing was not up to their standards. They actually went down there themselves, mowed the lawn to show our maintenance team what it needs to look like, and maintain the ground, so that's the kind of pride our owners take, um, in, in maintaining these properties, and that goes to the, you know, the playground, to the exterior facade, to the sidewalks, to the parking lot, I mean, anything. We, we take great pride in maintaining our properties, and, um, we have a lot of properties here in Columbus, um, you know, I urge you to go look at how those are maintained, um, go, you know, don't tell us, just go and look at them, um, and, and, you know, we think our properties speak for themselves.
Speaking of those other properties, I know that, uh, you were talking about the waitlist, do you, have you noticed, I know that you did a study as far as with the apartments and how many parking places, the one point three, but do we know as far as the existing apartments that are there already, are they having parking problems? Is there an...
Frank, I know you went, um, to the Livingston recently.
I just went to the Livingston this week, and the other day, she wrote, like, there's probably seven remaining parking spots that are still available. I could park, I could park anywhere in the Livingston, and we went, which is one we haven't talked about, but it's on the west side, and there's always a plenty of parking. There's a lot of our developments, and I've never seen a full parking lot, family or scene.
Day or night?
Day or night.
The middle of the...
Not so much a night, I mean, but we're during the day, you know, and in the evenings.
The middle of the day, seven open spots is not very many, because this is gonna be a work and stuff of that.
The Livingston location is senior living, huh?
It's probably, it was probably three o'clock when I was there, I met with them.
Is that mostly senior living?
No, general occupancy.
That's pretty full there, for the middle of the day.
Yeah, and that one's less than one-to-one, um, this is significantly greater ratio of parking than that one. Um, you know, I attended the, the grand opening of, uh, of the, uh, Fairwood Commons, which is actually just down Main Street, uh, you know, right outside of Bexley, um, you know, a lot of residents show up to that, everyone's there, you know, we have guests coming, I parked in the parking lot, no problem, um, we, you know, we, we have ample parking, that one is, uh, in similar ratio to, to this one.
And as far as, uh, the parking lots, there's lighting in them, is there cameras?
Yep, there are cameras that are, that are gonna be out in the par- you know, pointing out in the parking lot, there's lighting, you know, and that...
Is it, is it directional lighting, so, so it would not...
Correct, exactly.
Light solution to the neighbors?
Exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Could there be another question?
And I, I know privacy concern, I mean, again, at, at staff's recommendation, you know, these trees that you see here on the front, um, are gonna be at least, you know, two to three stories when they're mature, so that was something that, you know, we tried to incorporate as well.
And what they are?
Um, no, we don't have, our, our plan is to do local, um, we'll work, uh, you know, very closely, once we get into the, the permitting phase with the, you know, landscape architects and with the city to make sure that our landscape plan is, is, you know, reflective of this, uh, concept plan here.
On the north section, where we have, where you're gonna keep, um, the existing trees and tree lines, and Councilman Morrison brought up about evergreens, uh, how many arborvitae, maybe twelve or fifteen footers, are you considering planting in there, uh, for privacy and that sort of problem?
Yeah, so we're gonna keep as many of the existing trees as possible, I, I mean, we can go back to the, the street plan, but the, the goal is to have, as, you know, very densely, you know, around that parking lot, um...
We'll have a landscape architect design all this for us.
It'd be nice to have that here.
I'm very disappointed that we don't have documentation on what you're saying you're offering.
Yeah, this is, you know, this is the conceptual phase, the, the rezoning, um, you know, we're, we, we deeply apologize for not having, you know, those specifics to you, but I, I, you know, we, our intent is, is absolutely to, to include, you know, whether it be a fence, whether it be, you know, extra tree planting, um, you know, whatever the community desires to put there, we're, we're happy to put there, and it's in our budget currently, we're, we're budgeting, you know, for that.
But if we vote for this project without documentation on that, how is it enforced?
So it's enforceable, the permits.
Well, you're saying, but we don't know what it is.
Yeah, there's still, let, several approvals that we need to go through, um, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but there could, I mean, we can, it, you know, generally, rezonings are still conditioned on, you know, final building permits, things like that, and, and it's at that review stage, that level of detail that, that all of that is fleshed out.
So if, if, if I could, Councilman Morrison, if, will you go back to the site plan? Sorry, Julie.
So to his point, i- if city council wants to see either a consistent, uh, row of arborvitae planted every two feet or every three feet, so that it creates a hedge row as they've shown on the plan there, and you want those to be arborvitae, city council certainly can make that a condition of the approval. If city council wants to see a fence, uh, between those two properties, you can certainly make that as a condition. If city council wants to ensure that the current conceptual plan shows six, uh, trees, uh, between the properties, if city council wants that to be, you know, evergreen trees on top of a four-foot berm, they can make that as a condition, and then it's enforceable. And, and, I mean, we've done that, uh, with other projects, uh, with similar things on fences and landscaping, where city councils actually made it a condition similar to what Planning Commission has done with, uh, can, uh, their recommendations with conditions.
I understand, but we've also had better documentation to look at.
We, we believe in a, you know, a back-and-forth approach, you know, we, again, we're, we, we wanna do what you all want to see, whether it be the landscape berm, whether it be the trees, whether it be the fence, wha- whatever sort of screening, we would, we would push for a landscape buffer... We would, we would push for a landscape buffer, um, again, we think aesthetically, it's, it's gonna fit nice into the neighborhood. Um, but if, if it's council's wishes, and, um, you know, we're very happy to put a fence, um, again, the, the types of trees, um, you know, we wanna, again, our, our, we wanna source them locally and, you know, uh, and do that, but, but we, we wanna engage you all at this conceptual phase at council, and make sure, you know, again, this is just to change the zoning, um, to make sure that, you know, in our final plans, when we go for permits, that it has everything that you all, all want to see.
Are there any other comments from council or questions? At this time, uh, does the city have a staff report that they'd like to present?
Hello, I'm Jenna Garing, Economic Development Manager. Uh, I'd like to read the staff report that I presented at the Planning Commission for you all. The zoning change and special permit for this proposed multifamily development is supported in many ways by the recently adopted Whitehall Development Blueprint Comprehensive Plan. According to the plan, this section of Main Street is designed to be high-density mixed-use, as defined as ha- at having between twenty and forty units per acre. The proposed project is on approximately four point one-one acres and a hundred and two units, or twenty-four point eight units per acre. Public amenities such as plazas are encouraged, such as the plaza at the entrance of the development at Maplewood Avenue and at Main Street, provide both residents and visitors areas to relax and socialize. This project also does an excellent job of being oriented toward the street with the parking to the rear, thus screening it from view along the right-of-way, also in line with the Whitehall Development Blueprint. Additionally, per the plan, buildings, parking, and streetscape are to be well landscaped. The city, as demonstrated through the Whitehall Development Blueprint Comprehensive Plan, has been a strong proponent to grow in a smart way, by allowing more density to accommodate for a growing population in the Columbus region. This project is an opportunity for the city to add more density while blending residential with the commercial area of Main Street. Also, this property is located at one of the major gateways into the city of Whitehall, which helps clearly establish a break between Whitehall and the city of Columbus. High-density mixed-use development is intended to be of higher intensity and concentrated at major nodes within the city and gateways into the city. The comprehensive plan also outlines specific goals, objectives, and action items, opportunities for redevelopment occur, as redevelopment occurs. One goal includes promoting residential growth along major corridors, with the objective of supporting a higher density of development and a mix of uses along primary corridors within focus areas. This project presents an opportunity for the city to update the zoning on these parcels to reflect the recommendations in the comprehensive plan for the land use of this particular property. The proposed apartment complex provides a seamless transition from residential to the commercial area along East Main Street. Furthermore, this property has been underutilized for a significant amount of time. As proposed, the complex incorporates into Maplewood, preserving and enhancing the character of the existing neighborhood. And finally, this project allows the city to continue efforts of providing new housing on vacant or underutilized lots to increase access to additional affordable housing stock.
Thank you, Jenna.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wood, if anything additional from, not this time, thank you. Uh, at this time, are there any opponents who would like to speak in opposition of Portus Forty-Six Twenty-Twenty-One? If so, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Susan Robbins, I live at six seventy-seven Maplewood Avenue. Um, and I thank you for responding to my email, Mr. Potter. I am definitely very much against it, um, you can call it low, you can call it affordable housing, but it's still basically low income. Um, anytime you have to lower it so that somebody can afford it, it's still low income, it may not be Section Eight. And it's been proven that anything like that does bring it back down to property values. I've lived here for almost thirty-eight years, twenty-three years of it on Maplewood. Um, also, along with that, as far as property values, crime, it might not matter to anyone else, but we already have more than our share of crime. We have prostitutes, we have drugs going around, um, National Road, um, apartments. There's been, um, we get our, the sexual offenders thing occasionally that comes in the mail to tell us about. Why does that matter to me? And I don't usually tell anyone this, but I think it's important in this case. You're inviting, um, a possible, another rape for me, I've been raped twice. So, obviously, I'm concerned, someone tries it again, they're gonna have to kill me, because they're gonna have to fight, and I am much stronger than what I look, because that is what you're inviting into our home. The, one good thing about where we live, um, obviously not to crime, because that keeps on going up, and unfortunately, all the nice, nicer things where family should be, which is out where the park is, like Whitehall Park. You have the Y there, you have a nice, um, playground there. I don't even feel safe for my kids, um, grandkids to come over and visit. And to be, to be truthfully, to be very truthful about it, most of our kids don't wanna come there for very often, because they know it's a high-crime area. Uh, when we bought the house, it was advertised as, um, country in the city, and it kind of fits up, because we do have deer that come in the backyard every once in a while, that go between the three, um, or four properties. My neighbors aren't just neighbors, we become good friends, mo- um, not just somewhat casual friends, but in most cases, good friends, or what I refer to as, um, best friends. Um, and I grew up in a small town, when I first moved here, I had no idea where to go, and I was going to look at Chesterfield Apartments, because I worked, transferred from Defense Electronic Supply Center in Dayton, transferred from there to, um, DSCC. I almost went into Chesterfield Apartments, well, being a small-town girl from Zena, Ohio, I didn't know that was a bad crime area. So, people gave me a couple of different suggestions of where to live, and I did live at Fairport Apartments for a while. Um, obviously, those didn't last very long. But it used to be a small-town community, and it almost felt like being in Zena. The only way that it feels like Zena now is just with my neighbors who care about each other, and obviously, we're all cautious about what's happening. And my, you know, the crime may not bother you, but it involves us. And when you live at another end of town, and you're not seeing as much of this as what we have to deal with, then it doesn't affect you as much. But, and I'm not afraid to walk in my neighborhood, because in spite of what's happened, it took me years to recover from both of those, but I'm not a victim, I'm a victor, because I rose above that, and I chose to not let those two rapists control my life and ruin my life for the rest of my life. It's not gonna happen, no matter what. And I still walk in my neighborhood, in spite of the thing of the crime, because I'm gonna live my life no matter what. And I do walk in the neighborhood about three times a week, because unfortunately, since COVID, the gym that I used to go to, since I am a federal government retiree, has been closed. They did start opening it up for mission essentials, so if we're even still in Whitehall with everything that's happening, maybe I'll be able to go there and not be in the neighborhood at all as far as exercise. But, um, I just don't agree with it at all, and it affects my friends, it affects me. And even if you don't care, just consider this. Someone getting raped, it could be your daughter, it could be your granddaughter, it could be your wife. Now, maybe you think that's okay for others to be hurt, but with people that know my background and how I've actually conquered it, because I have, I don't live in fear, no matter what. But you're inviting people that don't have to live in, haven't had to live in fear until they moved in this neighborhood, to be even more fearful. And we shouldn't have to live like that. We've invested in the community, and I don't even feel like we should even have, we've been trying to make improvements on our home here and there. Well, if that happens, there's really no, there's really no, I don't wanna say desire, but there's really no reason to go and do anything unless it's absolutely necessary, if our property values are gonna go down. Why bother? Anyway, I thank you for listening, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jackie Klein, I'm at seven seven one Robinwood. And I will apologize ahead of time, normally when I'm in front of people, it's after a drink and I'm singing karaoke. But I will not sing, so don't worry about it. Um, I actually moved to Whitehall about eight years ago. I grew up in German Village, um, lived out in Reynoldsburg. Um, I became a, a real estate agent outside of college. I've been an agent for about fifteen years. Um, I take care of about thirty rental properties, um, between German Village and Whitehall. I, um, have sold several houses in Whitehall, I would say, that over the last eight years that I've been here. I very much appreciate what you guys have done to get the city cleaned up. I actually tell people, oh, no, you have to come check out houses in Whitehall. It's great, it's affordable, and I consider all of Whitehall affordable housing, to be honest. Compared to the rest of the prices in the city, Whitehall's very affordable. So, my problem with this is that the people here that live in an affordable area have a problem with it. And to say that there's a waitlist of seventy-five percent, or whatever it may be. I rented a place over the weekend, listed it on Friday, had showings on Sunday. I had twenty-five inquiries, seven applicants, and got a deposit today. Two years ago, prior to COVID, that same unit, I rented for two hundred dollars less and had two showings. The reason there's a waitlist to get into places is because no one can buy a house, no one can rent anything right now. There's a hous- housing shortage, period, in Columbus. Be rentals, be houses to purchase, it's just an issue. So, to argue and say that people wanna be here because there's a waitlist is ridiculous. Who would want to come and live here and look out their window that they said there were plenty of, and look at a salvage yard across the street? Who wants to sit there and be on a playground and look at a laundromat right there with people coming and going? I don't know if any of you have been stuck in traffic at the light at Maplewood in Maine during rush hour and watched some of the traffic and what goes on going in and out of that laundromat? Because guess what, you sit in traffic. You will sit for me to get to Maplewood to Robinwood during rush hour, between the hours of four-thirty and six-thirty. I have sat for twenty minutes. That's how bad traffic is right there on that corner. It's ridiculous, and then to add this many, this many places and congest all of that right back up, and then, like I said, who wants to be there? Where are they gonna go? I wanna go for a walk that evening. The only place to go is up and down Maplewood. They're not gonna walk up and down Main Street, go to the Walmart, go to the abandoned Sonic? Where are they gonna go? I mean, there's literally nothing, all the other developments you guys have put in. There's a, the, the, I'm on Robinwood, so the Rob, what is it, the?
What else?
Broadwood has a pool, they can go to the Tim Hortons, they're putting in a Starbucks. There's a restaurant across the street. I know places to go out and eat in Whitehall are few and far between, but it's something there to do. Burger King, where are they gonna go here? Where do you go walk and get a bite to eat? The Wendy's, the Tim Hortons all the way down on James, absolutely dangerous to walk that far on Main Street. The places that you did at Norton Crossing, there's a whole guy getting killed there. There, there's a library you can walk to, there's green space. I saw on that video, lots of green space, big playgrounds. I don't see any of that, and then to show that video and then come in here and put this up and say, this is what we're gonna do, is ridiculous, because it's not what they're gonna do, there's no space for that. And the green space behind it, so there's evergreens, what happens when no one waters? Because I've seen plenty of new developments going up and down Livingston, Maine, Broad. They all die, so now they're gonna look at brown dead stuff. I mean, it's just, it's one thing after another. So, just my thoughts, sorry, thank you for your time.
No, thank you.
Thanks, I live at four ninety-one Robinwood Avenue. Uh, we already have the complex that she mentioned on Broad Street. That's gonna be adding to traffic and other issues that some of the other people mentioned earlier in the day. What this complex being proposed tonight would cause more than, it's gonna cause more trouble than most people want. I already have a problem with trespassing on my property, and I got the creek running through, there's, people know all over Whitehall, there's little shortcuts that the kids take, you know? Backwatering my garden the other day, and there's a kid taking a shortcut through my neighbor's yard, jumping the fence. You put that on the corner over there, how much more of that am I gonna get? How much more am I gonna lose my privacy, because you're adding all these apartments in? I love the woods for the privacy feel. Adding this complex or any complex there would be irresponsible, I mean, so many reasons have been said tonight. Crime, everything along those lines. No matter how much se- security they say they're gonna provide, which didn't sound like much, honestly. It was a few cameras, somebody on staff during the daytime hours when everybody's at work. You know, we need affordable housing in Whitehall, Whitehall is mainly affordable housing. But you got the, the apartments, or the condos that were dealt with over on Broad and Hamilton, you know? Affordable housing can go in there later, just leave the woods alone, we don't need it, we don't want it. Now, while they were up there talking, I Googled this company. They have two-star review on Google. And they have a one point one four out of five-star review on the Better Business Bureau. And all I see on here is, uh, critical of their professionalism, their responsiveness, um, not taking care of the properties, managers not doing what they're, you know, supposed to be doing, responding to problems, lack of professionalism, lack of response, uh, just on and on and on and on. That doesn't sound like somebody I want down the street from you. And I believe their presentation also said that, I mean, you said a couple times that you wanted information that should have been there. You know, it wouldn't have been that hard for him to put it in. It doesn't make any sense, and I hope you guys see that.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brittany Lynn, I'm at six forty-nine Collingwood Avenue. I have lived in Whitehall most of my life. Um, I'm a lower resident, and we actually moved away for a while and moved back, because I love being here. Um, we have seen so much change in Whitehall, and most of it has been really positive, but the couple things that have been negative have been severely negative. They've been large bad decisions, instead of small ones, and this is a large bad decision. Um, I live in my house, I am right behind, uh, the shopping center, across from Walmart. So, behind my door is Deals and, and Dollar Tree, and all those places, the dental program, whatever. I moved here because I wanted to be in a place where I could raise my son safely. We are a mixed-race family, so I wanted a place that has lots of difference, lots of, lots of cultures, lots of, lots of things to experience. People who had money, people who didn't have money. I wanted him to be able to have a feel for everything in the world, vast variety, but that's not happening. Um, my hus- I was at home, uh, like I said, when I first, when I first moved here, it was very small things, like a little bit of change was missing out on my console, who cares, not a big deal. But in the last couple months, I was in the house, because I was working from home. My son is in the house with me, thanks God, with his friends. My husband had went out to the garage, which is the man cave. He had just walked in the door, not even sixty seconds, and I hear this loud noise. It's the police pulling up in my neighbor's driveway. Well, I know my neighbor is not home, but the kids are, so I'm scared. So, I looked out the window, the police officer runs down the driveway, so I'm following him in my window to see what's happening. Well, this kid jumped my fence, now he's in my yard, and another police officer's coming from another side. And they're going into the man cave with a canine dog. My husband was just in there, so I yell, babe, are you down there, are you down there, everything okay? Yeah, yeah, I'm here, what's going on? I don't know. The canine dog pulls some guy out of my garage, okay? He's bleeding, and he looks like he's dead. They have to narc-han this man, pull squad up through my driveway to get him, while my five-year-old watches. That's not safe. That's not safe. That man was okay, but we were called to court to testify. That's not safe, if you build more complexes, you're going to bridge that gap for crimes to come into my house. I do not want people shortcutting behind that fence and making bad decisions with my five-year-old son in the backyard. It's not okay. It's not okay. It's not okay. I just, I hope that you guys understand, like, it's, it's just a bad decision. We can't have that many people right there. It's just not good. They're gonna start coming into our property whether or not they, you know, you intend them to. They're gonna have friends on the opposite side, those friends are gonna come in, you're, you're inviting more people into this community, which is not gonna be a good thing. I, I question whether or not I want to stay here, which is hard for me because this is I love it here, and I hope that you make a better choice. I also have three letters for people who couldn't be here. I don't know where to submit them, but you're welcome to them as well. There are several other reasons, which everybody has explained already. You know, it's traffic, the overpopulated schools. I mean, there's just, there, it's just reason on top of reason that we just shouldn't do it. I know that they talked about trash. Um, we clean up trash daily in our yard from there. Um, I don't know if you guys, if they have somebody that cleans up trash all the time, but how far down the street are they gonna go? Are they just gonna clean? Because I guarantee that's not where all the trash is gonna stay. Um, I just hope you make a better decision. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can we take a quick break? I, I've got.
Okay, excuse me, folks, if, if, I'm sorry. We need to take a quick five-minute break. We've got some council folks. I, I apologize, and we'll take this right back up. So we'll reconvene at nine thirty-eight.
I have to refresh my AMI. Watch, watch all the council, watch. Everybody go to the house. Do you have anything to watch right now?
Thank you, everyone. We will now resume at nine forty-two. And again, I'd like to remind our guests, if you could, again, please keep your side conversations outside or to yourselves after the meeting, so we can hear our speakers who come up and share their thoughts with us. So right before we were going in, I believe there was another.
Hit with me.
Well, okay, you.
I will be quick. My name is Teresa Plank. I own the property at six-four-five Maplewood. All I can say is talk is very cheap. I think there's a much better use for that piece of property. I can put a picture up there of Jennifer Lopez or Naomi Campbell and tell you that I'm gonna look like them, or that I do look like them. That's not necessarily true. That's all I have to say. I know there's a lot of people that, that invest in this community, that don't live here, that don't give a crap about anything that goes on, as long as they get their money. And that's what this situation is, and I don't appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That would work for you?
You know what, actually, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Hello, my name is Mary Williams. I live on Robinwood. I won't give my address, but I want everybody to know my address. But they already built a big complex at one end of my street under the radar because of COVID. Our street ain't safe as it is. It took the police forty-five minutes to get across the street from my house after I break in because of the crime that's already happening. Adding more crime with this building is exactly what is gonna happen. I don't even feel safe for my own daughters to walk four houses down to play with their best friends without me with them because of how bad the crime has become. So I highly suggest not to have this, another big building, parking complex in our area. They already split the one end at one end, you got the ghetto Walmart at the other end, then you got the drug rehab centers at both ends, which is bringing Robinwood the cut through for all the drug addicts to come down right along with Maplewood. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brian Tippett. I live on Robinwood. I've booked state my address, because I'm a very private person. But she's my boss, she's my neighbor. I make thirty-five thousand a year. I own two vehicles and pay over a thousand a month in rent. They talk about one-point-three percent for parking. Bullcrap. So their parking lots fill up, overflow their nine cars to the street. What happens if twenty of those people that live there decide to have a house party and invite two or three guests? Where are they gonna park? Where's their trash going? They said that they're not responsible for trash on the streets, but they're bringing this in. So who's responsible? I'm not responsible for picking up their trash that gets thrown out into the streets. Speeding down the road. Last minute, they said that they did a study that the average speed was twenty-seven. No. When you're out driving on the freeway, people are flying down the road, all of a sudden they hit the brake lights, the brakes. What are they doing? They seen a cop. If they know they're gonna get caught, they slow down. And there's security cameras. This is the day of the internet. Who has not seen world's dumbest criminals? Security cameras don't deter nothing. Security alarm systems don't deter nothing anymore. We're not safe. You're adding to the problem instead of fixing it.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing our concerns. I didn't get to all my concerns because I'm too long-winded, I guess. First off is.
We'll need your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Kathleen Robert, or, I'm sorry, Kathleen Holmes. I live at six-eighty-nine Maplewood. And, uh, we just don't want this rezoning. There's so many reasons against it for what they've shown, not enough parking and everything. But Whitehall already owns the properties that they are tearing down, the condominiums on Woodcliff, Midcliff, and Hamilton Road there. There's plenty of room to put up a building at, so nice, as you say, you know, so nice that'll look good, you know, for the neighborhood. But it'll also, it'll have a park nearby, it'd have the kids off the streets. They didn't even have a playground. They said they're gonna put it on Main Street. That's where the hookers walk. You can sit there and watch prostitutes, drug deals, everything right there. You don't want your little kids, grandkids, friends, neighbors, kids having to play right there. They didn't even have a proposed, they said, oh, this is where we'll put it because you asked about it, and I thank you for doing that. We found so many just things that aren't right with what they've said, what, you know, of all of it. They already have, okay, if you do put the building over in the Woodcliff area there, you've got plenty of room for the parking, you've got plenty of, you already have sewer systems set up for big, a bunch of housing or whatever it'll take for that. I didn't like the idea there's only three exits. All I could think of is if there's a fire, you know, those people are trying to get out three exits? That's scary for me. Um, school bus, buses and things, the kids won't be playing on the street, so it won't cause a problem. They're off, you know, that park was fantastic. I grew up there. I was there right when those condos were built. I, you know, as a little kid, you know, we played in that park. And I just, you know, the property values won't go down for any of the residents. There are no residents over there. It was all that, you know, condos and stuff. So it wouldn't be a burden on the, uh, the property owners of their, our houses going down in value. It also is close to public transportation, as Mr. Cooper and them said. It has two accesses. We only have Main Street where the public, uh, service is. They would have two, Hamilton Road and Broad Street. It's close to, you know, stores, different things going on there. They're trying to build up the area, which is great. And, uh, Whitehall could make money leasing the property. They could have money coming in, you know, to fix the sewer systems, to do extra things with. It wouldn't overburden the residents sewer systems as, right now, I see, like I said, the sewer systems are already backing up, you know? And there's nothing, everybody says, oh, it's the street height, it's this and that, and nobody's come about to fix the problem. Well, if you put the big building, it's gonna, yeah, okay, you add a little bit to it. It's already flooding, it's gonna flood faster, it's gonna flood more. And that's all there is to it. There is no, oh, it's only a little bit. A little bit after you're underwater is enough to drown you. Okay? So I just hope that you look, and they were talking about, okay, they'll have a playground. What do the teens do? If you can get them outside, if they're on their hoverboards or on their scooters or whatever, where are they gonna hang out? Corner of Main and Maplewood? I hope, do you ever drive past there and see stuff going on there? It's not a place for teens. You know, you have the Y there, but our, where's our community center? Where'd that go? You know, the free, something basketball, the, you know, there's the city parks. The, um, just, that's pretty much all I have to say. It just, don't do it, please. If you care about your citizens, and you care about the people of Whitehall, your community, please don't put it there. Make it, put it over in, you know, Whitehall owns that. Why not make money? Get the, lease the property to them. You make money, and the kids will be safe. I'm a Sunday school teacher. I teach, you know, kids of all backgrounds, all nationalities and stuff, and I just, you know, I'd hate to see any of those kids over there. I don't want them there. It's not because I don't want them there, it's I don't want them to have to deal with that stuff there. They're too young and impressionable. You want them to have a nice park or something. We don't have one near Maplewood. You gotta walk three or four streets over. And like they said, it's dangerous. Trying to get, you know, the side streets don't have sidewalks. You gotta walk in the street. Those kids would have to walk down those streets to get there, or go up Main Street through the buildings and stuff to get up to Lambie Lane. You know, just think about it. It's wrong. It's not a place to rezone. You don't have to rezone over there. It was already, you know, the apartment complexes and stuff, or those townhomes. You have to rezone this. You don't have to. You don't have to rezone. It's already zoned. It's already there. It can make money for the city, it'll keep the sewer systems and our ba, backups that our neighbors have. It would help everybody. I really believe that. I believe that, you know, taking care of the kids, if you do decide to build this place in Whitehall somewhere, you know, give them something. Not a junkyard, not a path to drugs and prostitution or anything. Because look at the sex trafficking Columbus and all those nations dealing with right now. Those kids be out there on Main Street playing? What about their parents turn their backs and somebody right off Main Street, they're coming down, they're like, if I might grab one of those kids, and off they go? That's beyond your back. That'll be on your conscience. Because you are the ones that want this, or if you voted in, you know, are saying, yeah, that doesn't, that doesn't matter to me, those kids, you know, that complex will make us money. Yeah, it will. It'll make the, but why not make money where they'll be safe? Help the kids, help the neighborhoods, and help your residents. Thank you for hearing my thoughts.
Thank you.
I'm gonna say something, excuse me for. I, I didn't come in here, hi, I'm Harley Robinson, three ninety-seven Collingwood. I, I didn't, the one thing I'll say, what I've learned, I didn't come in here to oppose anything as far as the, the INCAP. I, I, I believe in what we're trying to do as a city, and I love what the mayor has done and, and, um, in the development of all that. What I will say is, is life is timing, right? And we're not there yet with, to, to the point of, of, what are you gonna look at? The, the junkyard across the street, right? So in hearing the proposal, I, I feel that it's, it's, it's compacted. It's really compacted. And so the question is, is why can't we look at maybe revamping that INCAP? That, why does there have to be a hundred and thirty-four units and a hundred and four spaces? Because I can tell you, if we're gonna have affordable housing, right, then you've got people coming in, whether they're making thirty-five thousand dollars a year and paying the rent, right? There's still, there's still income level woes, if you will, right? And so we're still gonna have an overflow of people that are gonna be on, on Maplewood. There's gonna be inadequate parking, is from what I'm seeing. And the fact, and the other question that I have is, what are we marketing? Are we marketing young professionals or are we marketing families? Right? So if we're marketing families, it's inadequate, sir. You're, you're right on point. It's inadequate to not address where these kids are gonna go. Across the street in the junkyard? Right? So as I sat here and I, 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 I watched the proposal and, and I came in as a proponent of it, okay? I think it needs revamped. I, I think, what about the eighty units and, and, and they would hate to hear this, the developers would hate to hear this, but go back to the drawing board. Why does it have to be so compacted? Why can't it be a beautiful impact where we're getting green space and addressing? And, and then I would ask city council, what do you want there? Do you want young professionals or do you want families? Right? So I feel that it's a disjoint from where we're at right now. Um, that particular corner is a drug haven. We all know it. And, and we can't get the city of Columbus on the backside to deal with that, right? I live on Collingwood. I don't feel the same way as these people behind me, my neighbors do, and they're wonderful people. But I, I've, I've got to say, just, that, it's setting it up the way it currently is, that situation, life is timing. That INCAP, it's, what we're doing, compounding it, is not necessarily, in, in what I'm seeing and being exposed to today, and I was a proponent of it. It needs to be revamped and smaller. It needs to be smaller. If we're gonna get any buy-in from the city, from, from the community members, members who live behind it. And that's just, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Danny Robbins, Maplewood, six-seven-seven. Um, first, I've, I've got some, three questions. First of all, I would like each one of you to look at me and answer, do you have an open Thanks, you. Okay, I got three nods. That's kind of what I thought. Second of all, second question, you, you already have got, um, a big complex over here on Robinhood, Robinwood. The, uh, where the old bag of nails, that's a new one. I wanna know, how much have you increased the fire department help and the police department to take care of that additional, all those residents? Does anyone have that answer? Have you hired anyone?
Yes, we have. In fact, we just swore in, uh, two new firefighters yesterday. We're hiring, uh, swearing in another one next week, and we have hired new police officers and up the strength. Thank you.
Thank you. Because we don't have enough. Uh, my third question is, who is gonna service that corner? That, I know it's in Whitehall, but I, I see it coming, and one of the residents already said something, she had called for an ambulance to come. When, you know, I live just right up the street there. I'm five houses up from where they wanna put this. If I call nine-one-one, they're, they're gonna tell me to call, you know, Columbus. Columbus is gonna tell me, no, we don't service you. You gotta call to Whitehall. You know, and then Whitehall's gonna say, put you on hold. Okay? Well, when something happens there to one of these little kids or whoever else, and you guys know what goes on up and down the street there, how long are we gonna have to wait to get service? For someone having a heart attack? For a child being molested or, you know, stolen away? You know? Have, have you thought about those kind of things?
I, I will tell you right now, our response times are very, very quick. We usually get to somewhere, a police department usually in, within three minutes. Uh, after that, uh, a fire is the next on the scene, usually within four to five, depending on where, uh, we're located. We don't have any substations, you know, in Whitehall because it's so small. But our response times are one of the best in the state.
Okay, I agree with that. But my question is.
Maplewood, that gets serviced by Whitehall? It's not gonna get serviced by Columbus. Don't we, don't we, that gets serviced by Columbus, and we need, Columbus is a.
Mutual aid.
And we have mutual aid with Columbus. In fact, I think we serve Columbus more than Columbus serves us.
Over six thousand a year, right? Over six thousand a year, right? I mean, we bust hail out of our, out of our folks next door, right across the street.
Okay. Well, uh, it's, something is gonna come up. You can count on it. Just like since that laundromat has went in. There is trash all up and down Maplewood in front of that laundromat from, since they've opened. I've called the police and reported it. Our neighbors have. They go clean it up once and then a week or two weeks goes by and now here it goes again. Trash, beer cans, uh, you name it. You know, and so, that's here and they wanna build this building over here, right across the street. And as far as you guys thinking about you're gonna have parking on the street? You're crazy. There is absolutely no way that's gonna work. You, if you go up there, the, you know, you got a specific left turn lane to make a left from Maplewood on a main. Right beside that, one lane is the lane to go straight into the car lot or the junkyard or you can turn right on a Maplewood. That's all the road there is. And they're saying there's gonna be room to park nine cars out there? No! There is no way. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Gerald Dixon, thirty eight seventy seven Doni Street. Uh, there were a couple of thoughts that came to mind after the presentation because I didn't get a chance to go to the planning commission meeting. Just off the top of my head before my prepared remarks, uh, I have also noticed the prostitution on Main Street, right there near Whitehall. Uh, there is a very old walnut tree in, on the property of the first house which will be torn down. It's just about where, uh, the parking lot is on the development. And that, that walnut tree has got to be, at least maybe a hundred years old or so. I would mourn its loss. Thirdly, uh, the driveway which comes out onto Maplewood, it's directly across from the last house on Maplewood on the east side of the street, which is a beautiful old bungalow with a big porch. And they're gonna be sitting on that porch watching the headlights, the cars coming in and out, day in and day out. You don't think that's gonna affect their property values? And that's a beautiful old property. It's right behind yours. Uh, okay, so, this is my statement of opposition to ordinances forty-six and forty-eight twenty-one. You can take this as my opposition to both. I won't speak again. Given it your behest, that which I hope you, as the citizens' representatives, take into thoughtful consideration before making your final decision. My issues with the proposed development at Maplewood and Main begin with the overcrowding of a neighborhood and intersection. The woods has, for one hundred years, been a serene neighborhood of single-family homes. Adding one hundred and two apartment units crowds as many onto one small plot of land as that which inhabits nearly all the houses on both sides of Maplewood from Main to Elburn. That plot of land, four acres, about four acres, which will contain roughly the same amount of people as eighty-five acres otherwise does in that neighborhood. It is a density coming alongside the Broadwood Development on the opposite end of our neighborhood that will, in my opinion, overburden, abuse and ill-effect the quality of life in this one hundred-year-old neighborhood. Uh, for instance, what I suspect will be the addition of at least one hundred and two more cars to our neighborhood, that which will further burden our already busy and abused streets. With the addition of these cars from the enclave on Main, they will be going about their business to Target and Kroger through the woods via Elburn and Doni and Washburn. Residents know and can swear to you, the growing safety concerns an awful noise with the increased traffic already here. Motorcycles tearing down the long avenues, kids on unlicensed motorbikes, cars peeling out and loudly racing down the streets. This apartment at that spot will only increase this burden in our neighborhood. Uh, so too, Maplewood and Barnett is already a traffic nightmare. It is a short block and traffic is already backed up there with the light at Barnett and left-hand turners onto Barnett and Maplewood. Sometimes the line of cars in the left, uh, turn lane to get onto Barnett is so long, there is no space to get in the left turn lane to get onto Maplewood. If this apartment house is built, it will, A, sorely overburden that half-block with even worse traffic nightmares and/or B, cause those coming from the enclave of Main to simply avoid Main Street traffic by going north on Maplewood and east on Washburn to find alternate routes around. Again, overburdening the woods' character, serenity and homeowners' lives with needlessly increased traffic. And why? Because someone wants to enrich themselves by building apartment buildings that would be inappropriate for that spot, given the size they want to build it and the character of the neighborhood it butts up against. It will be even more so were you to approve the zoning change. There is the concern of, of, uh, things for the children to do that would live there. There's a rec center down at Barnett Livingston. Will they navigate dangerous Barnett to get down there? Where's the nearest park? Lambie Lane, Robinwood Park?
John Bishop, two miles away.
Where might their idle hands take them? Will they go around to Napoleon to hang out? Will there nightly gunshots? Or down around the woods to hang out and entertain themselves in any number of ways, good or bad? Uh, people mentioned the schools already, so I won't do that. Uh, the citizens who are already here planted their roots and invested decades of their lives in a neighborhood they like as it is. By changing the zoning and allowing this complex to be built, in my estimate, would bring further damage, harm and heartache to this neighborhood and with it, the community at large. This exact sentiment, I'm certain, would be equally shared were it going in at Fairway Boulevard and Country Club Road. It is very easy to be a proponent of something that won't affect one's own neighborhood. In closing, I would say that I am strongly opposed to the change in zoning for that corner for all the reasons I've stated. It is not apartments I am against, so much as is where they go and how that will affect its immediate surroundings. Certainly in terms of quality of life. I have no issue with it remaining commercial and putting in a business or warehouses or office or even a small manufacturing business like a brewery. Something that actually produces jobs. Densely housing people at that spot is a recipe for greater issues I don't believe Whitehall will or can deal with in the future. And so, I see it as this. While the city collects the revenue and the developers and owners make their money about in our neighborhood, it's the residents of this neighborhood, like me, who will have to deal, live with and pay for what they leave behind in the wake of poor city planning schemes. As we've seen with a Target on one end of our neighborhood and a Walmart on the other. Huge trucks go wherever they want, which City Hall has done nothing to curtail or change. Litter has worsened and speeders and scofflaws run unabated through our neighborhood despite speeding monitor devices and what I would characterize as insufficient police presence. To say that any additional nuisances this project will bring to the neighborhood will be swiftly dealt with, knowing the reality of the current administration's insufficient proactivity, is laughable. As the residents themselves know all too well. As such, I implore you to reject this submission for zoning change as the independent agency you are, elected as, and consider the implications, not for the administration and the developers themselves, nor the OHM Whitehall Works blueprint, but rather the citizens, the people of the community themselves. Thank you for your consideration.
Hello. My name is Ricky Cropper. I live at six seven one Maplewood. We've been here, hmm, about eight years. Um, we originally were gonna buy the house, flip it, sell it, move on. We fell in love with our neighbors, all of our neighbors. And then we just keep meeting more and more, um, that are wonderful. Um, I am not opposed to helping low-income. I am not opposed to building new apartments. I myself, at one time, lived on Napoleon thirty years ago when it wasn't as scary. Um, but I lived there and they did go by my income. I was a single mom with two kids. I now own my home that I'm very proud of and I have worked my fill off for that. This proposal, to me, is just more like an invasion. They are not here. They will not deal with anything. And it, obviously, it doesn't seem to be like it's very complete. There is a lot left undone, a lot that they still need to figure out. Unlike, we, we know what we want and what we don't want, you know? I feel like this is just, this will be more crime. It will be worse on traffic, the same thing that everybody else said, but we'll have to be the ones there to live through it. If, if we do. I mean, my kids have had their cars crashed into parked on the side of the road, thrown up if my neighbors drive or in their yard. Um, we've had people cutting through, you know, it, it, people are gonna do what they do. You're gonna have crime. You're gonna have all kinds of bad stuff, no matter where you are. But things like this are just kind of asking for it. Because it is a big crowded, it's a small area for a lot of people that you're trying to bring in, which is not gonna be beneficial for any of us and we're all gonna wanna move. I don't wanna look for anywhere else to move. I love my house. It's an older house. It's like a nineteen fifty house. I love my yard. I do my yard work. I take care of my yard. We're trying to redo our house. But why am I gonna keep wanting to do that for someone else to enjoy it if I decide that I need to sell it? I'm not going to. But I do like Whitehall. I've been here off and on my entire life. I've had family that has lived here when it was, I guess, nicer. And there, like I said, there are good parts and bad parts. I love the fact that you're trying to build it up. Because it has been like, for a while, and I'm sorry to put it, but that's the way it is. But things like this, if, if you can't give a straight answer, you know, your original was, you want a hundred and thirty-four hundred, now you want nine more. Where are you gonna put them? How are you gonna do that? It's not gonna happen. It's not gonna happen for us. You'll never experience it because you won't be there. We will. They are not Whitehall. We are Whitehall. We are Whitehall. They are not. I'm completely opposed to that. I feel like, if the city of Whitehall loves the city of Whitehall and the residents that are in it, keep it that way. Love the people that helped make it. You guys helped make it. You know what I mean? We work for you guys. A lot of the things that are here wouldn't be here anyways. You know, I'm all for doing things for children. My children are grown. I have twenty-five grandchildren now. I would like for them to come. I'd like for them to be able to take them to a park or just to have them walk down the street without being afraid. You know? Spend some time there. Come there in the evening. Heck, come sit on my front porch with us. Drink some tea, drink some coffee and just watch what happens. The medium, the, the.
Average speed?
Not twenty-seven miles an hour. I'm sorry, it's not. We sit on our porch since, that was brought to our attention. We sit on our porch. I was flying fifty and I'm like, yep, that's twenty-seven miles an hour. My mom came over. For some reason, she was in Marwick, she came and wanted to go to our Krogers. I didn't like the idea that she was going there. I said, Mom, why would you do that? Oh, change the scenery. Okay. She gets passed on the road. And she's doing thirty. My mom has kind of a lead foot. But she's doing thirty and cars are still passing her. I mean, it's terrible. But then you're just gonna add more traffic to it. You know, the laundromat did that. Walmart did that. You're having to deal with a whole lot of stuff in, in a nice community, but it's not so nice anymore. So, please, please, care about your community. Care about your residents. This is Whitehall.
Sir, sir, you've already spoken on this.
I know, but I, I wanna explain my anger with Whitehall. I've been in my home for eleven years. I, I wanted to build a garage. I had your guy come over and he says, oh, well, you have a garage. And he turned around and walked away. The end. I was trying to do it on the up and up. And I've been upset with the fact that I couldn't build me a garage to keep my motorcycles in. I love to tinker on motorcycles. I got a forty-five thousand dollar truck in my driveway that sits outside because I ain't got a garage that it will fit in. It depreciates it very much. My wife's car is very expensive also. It sits outside because I ain't allowed to build a garage, but yet you'll let this crap go on. And that's why I'm upset. I'm done.
Thank you. If there are no more opponents, I would like to welcome any proponents. And if you would, please, state your name and address.
Eddie Carmia, at thirty-five forty, East Main.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your first name.
Eddie Carmia. This is, uh, Brian Savage, uh, president, council, mayor. Basically, uh, we've, we've had multiple offers for the, uh, property. Um, we had, uh, U-Haul come to us and make us an offer. Um, we basically, we didn't think that the residents would like to have that type of , uh, business, uh, with storage facility and trucks. It's not like we just wanted to sell it to anybody. Uh, we, I had, uh, Turkey Hill come to us and put a gas station on the property. And we also, uh, we didn't think that would be acceptable. But when they decided to bring apartments to the property, we thought it would beautify the corner itself. Because you're looking at, uh, uh, an old brickyard and, I mean, it, 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 we don't have that type of money to put into the property as of now, uh, because of COVID, things have changed for our company. And, uh, by, by selling it to WODA, they're gonna beautify the corner. They're gonna put brand-new apartments. They're gonna upgrade that area right there. And it's, it's something for the council to maybe upgrade, uh, uh, the whole street going from Main Street all the way down, uh, uh, hearing that, uh, the way the public, uh, perceives, uh, Main Street. If we can make it something like what they have on Broad Street, we think that would be a good, good thing for Whitehall.
Um, Brian Savage, Savage Real Estate. I'm a real estate broker, commercial, I do some residential as well. I do a lot, uh, here in Whitehall. I'm also a member of the Community Improvement Corporation, so work with most of you guys and work with the citizens here in Whitehall as well. Uh, Eddie's family approached me about nine years ago to try and do something with this property. And it's been a challenge, to say the least. We wanted, you know, we, Turkey Hill's been on us for like four years now to put a gas station there. You guys don't want a gas station on that corner, right?
Yeah. We don't want a gas station.
You don't want that. You don't trust, you don't want a gas station there. Uh, U-Haul's approached us to expand their truck parking facility. It's like a used car lot. So, the thing is, with, with the proposal from WODA Corporation, you are now starting to redevelop Main Street. This is the entryway into Whitehall. Think about the possibility of the, uh, salvage yard going.
Will they offer you more money for the property than moving to U-Haul?
No, no, actually, U-Haul will offer a lot more.
Why don't you come to the neighbors and talk to us?
Folks, folks, this is not to engage in a conversation.
So, basically, what we're getting at here is that, that this is a catalyst, sort of like what's happening on Broad Street. And as a catalyst, things will start progressing. Uh, Jack, you mentioned the sauna. That's under a lease right now. Uh, you know, we're looking at possibly getting rid of that car lot across the street. We're looking at possibly getting rid of the, the laundromat. So, there, there's a lot of things that'll start happening with this type of development. And that's really what you look for, um, from this kind of piece of property. There's not a lot of four or five acre properties in the city right now for this, this type of development. So, um, so we asked the council to, to approve the zoning, uh, and let this project go forward with the hopes that over the next year, two years, three years, there's gonna be more.
Sir, no.
I'm leaving, don't worry, but.
You're full of shit.
No, sir, that's not, that's not appropriate behavior.
That's not right.
You see who they care about?
Sir, sir, I'm gonna ask you to leave.
I'm gone.
Sorry, Brian.
That's okay, Tom. Um, so, yeah, so, um, you know, based upon what we're looking at here, um, we do ask the council to, uh, to approve the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
A question? Sir? Questions?
How long has the property been vacant, since Sandusky moved out?
Uh, you guys bought, uh, yeah, about ten years.
Sandusky's been gone since two thousand and three, I think.
And I've had, as I said, I've had the listing ever since, right after they bought it. And it's, you know, and again, it's, it's one of those things where there's, there's a lot of demand for that type of property. But the question is, what's the right use for that property?
And that's, that's a question too. Many people have asked me, well, why don't they put just single residential homes on there?
It's not, it's not big enough. Yeah. It's not big enough. So it's either, it's either an apartment complex that can go there. Somebody talked about a mixed-use development. The problem with Main Street right now is you, you just don't have that demand. And retail, because of COVID, is, is still coming back, so.
Same for office space.
Office space too, yeah. Office spaces, you know, right now, if you look at vacancies, you're at, you know, all-time high. You know, fifteen, twenty percent vacancies right now. And that, and that's just because tenants are still paying rent, even though they're not on. Mine's face. So, so really, you know, when, when we looked at this and we looked at the, the family, Eddie's in-laws have passed away over the last couple of years. So, you know, the, the family wants to, to get rid of the property or sell the property. And this, you know, again, we've had a lot of offers on it, and this one just made the most sense as, as an entryway into, into the community.
Brian, my issues with things like a gas station or Turkey Hill, they... For one thing, there's environmental issues regarding tanks. You see on Hamilton, we had an old gas station, and the tanks and everything are just now being pulled out of that. So for environmental hazards, just for me, I don't wanna consider an environmental hazard at the end of Maplewood.
Mayor, the environmental hazards are minimal now because of the tanks that go in. But we were looking at.
More from, from crime.
Wouldn't there be more traffic? More traffic, more crime?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that's the reason why.
That's why we didn't wanna do that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. All right.
So, no, we looked at a lot of that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other questions? You got it, counsel? Eddie?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mark Holster. I, I live at three eighty-nine Collingwood. President Potter, members of the council, administration, city attorney. I'm three score.
Excuse me, could you please keep the conversation down so we can hear this gentleman?
I'm three score.
Can you maybe speak a little louder into the... Julie, can we turn that speaker, that microphone?
Let me just not move my head so much, and maybe that'll help. But I just wanted to, uh, see, I moved in about fifteen months ago. I've, I've raised my kids in Gehenna. I've been in the Colossary about thirty years. I've lived in German Village, Dublin. I just moved here from Victorian Village. The reason is because of the magnificent plots. Where can you find a half acre this close to the city and the birds and the quiet? And I just loved it. And then, I didn't realize how, it was developing, but I, I remember decades ago, when I worked at Bell Labs on East Broad, people would talk about the city, and nobody wanted to live in Whitehall. That's where you stayed away from. Who in the... I didn't, at the time, I was in Gehenna, but I come to find, when I moved here, and I looked, I looked beneath the surface, and I found stuff like this. We've been talking about this. To me, this is a work of urban planning artwork. I don't know. I, I might be making too much of it. But I applaud your courage for planning and, and the chutzpah for standing by something like this, because you need guidelines to, you need vision to do something like this. And, and my neighborhood fellows, I, I get you. I totally get all the downsides you're talking about. I do. And, and you're probably closer to me to experiencing. I'll give you that. But if you look at the big picture, you're basically making a, a NIMBY argument, not in my backyard. And Whitehall is on a, on a trajectory that appears to me, it's so exciting I moved here, that I can see great urban planning. I see a, a tight, young, aggressive, smart executive team in various departments who've got great reputations around. And I see a council that, that backs, backs them up. I'm excited about Whitehall's development in its future. But I know there'll be problems. I haven't heard anything here that would, uh, it's so big that it would cause me to be against this project as a, as a, as a, as a community member. But I understand that people have different, different attitudes. I totally agree. And with all due respect to the, the landowners, whose thinking I appreciate, I look at that corner and I see a, what is it? Eyesore. With all due respect, it's an eyesore. I, I don't feel safe now walking there. With the vitality of an apartment building, as, as lovely as it is, I thought it was nice. That vitality, it'll be a catalyst for that area. When you're driving east on Main Street into Whitehall, boom, there you are. You know it's Whitehall because, hey, there's something nice there. And, yeah, I know it's got problems, and, you know, where are you gonna put the kids? And, and what about the headlights in their, their windows and the rapist running? But the people have the choice of to, to, to move there and to rent the place, I figure. So they can decide for their own kids if it's an appropriate place. And I can respect that. But to me, it, 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 in keeping with moving forward, I bought here partly because the property values are appreciated at the most, at the highest rate of any neighborhood in the city. That's why I moved from Victorian Village. And, and the big yard, of course. But I don't see that ending anytime soon, and especially with the kind of stuff that's going on. The fire hose of funding that must be flowing into our schools because of the increased property values. I don't know what's going on there, but I wanna attend some school board meetings to find out. And if we have the same kind of courage and forward-looking on the part of our, our local folks, and we can hold the line on the NIMBY attitudes of our beloved citizens and friends, we'll make progress, and it'll keep going. And it's unstoppable. In Columbus, I mean, I was sincere when I said I'll buy your house because seriously, as soon as I moved in here, I realized I know I would like an acre. I got a half acre, I'd like an acre. Okay? Well, it's, every time I find a house, it's, it's, it's gone in less than a day at thirty thousand over asking price. And I can't compete with, you know, I do my own work in my own room and my own landscaping, and I work from home in technology, and I can't compete with these flippers. I can't get one of these one-acre lots to put up. If you all want to sell next level complex, I would like first right of refusal, just because of the big old yard. But more so, I see it as a, you know, I came here because I saw the signs. I see the commotion. I was kinda curious to what my fellow citizens were thinking, and now I know. And frankly, I'm a little bit intimidated. I'm afraid when I walk out here, I'm gonna get ambushed by... And, and, you know, I moved here because it was diverse, and I sense a vitality here. And I feel safe in, in Whitehall because it's diverse. Because it's diverse. It must be accepting and tolerant, right? Must be, to have all this diverse, all this diversity we have. But like I said, I've only been here fifteen months. And, but what I've heard here makes, gives me pause, really. But, you know, I, I know, you know, you've been in a place for thirty years, and you love it, and all of a sudden, this big old honking right in your backyard. I get that, totally. But it's not a prison. It's not a brothel. It's not a...
But.
A, a pool hall. It's not a pool hall. It's, it's an apartment complex with human beings, with kids. And you, you, and, and I, I, I would just implore you to just have, have a little faith in your elected officials, the progressive folks here, that, that do stuff like this. And, you know, a lot of cities just kinda do stuff, but I was really impressed when I read this. I really was. And I haven't fully digested it, but I see it happening. It's not just a piece of paper. I see it happen, which inspires me. So I appreciate that. And I know it takes some, some guts, you know, to... Because, you know, you're here to serve us, the citizens, and so, you know, and I appreciate you listening to me, and I appreciate you listening to my, my neighbors. As my Yiddish grandma would say, what's not to like? What's not to like about this? I ask you, crime? I wouldn't walk there now. I'd walk there with these hundred people. And those people gotta, you know, every, that's what a catalyst does. I mean, it catalyzes other stuff, good stuff.
And I think that's what happens. Why don't we just have...
It's happening everywhere.
Not just in Whitehall, but, you know, everywhere. So I can have a little bit of faith on that. And if, if, if stuff does go south, and, you know, it'll, there will be more traffic. There will be. I know that. And there'll be. Trash. I haven't, I haven't seen trash, but I don't know if it's there. But we can do it. We can mitigate them. It, it, you know. But we can't just stop all good stuff in our community just because the folks around it complain. And, and I honor the complaints because you, the people that have spoken.
Folks, 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 this is, this is not, this is not a conversation. This is, this is a... So, folks, this is not a conversation. It's an opportunity. Sir.
I have a say-so. I'm a member of this community. I'm a new member. I haven't been here thirty years. But I'll tell you, in twenty-seven years of those thirty, I bet not much happened. You know, maybe, maybe twenty. But now, gee, you can't, I mean, you can't leave the neighborhood without seeing the, the, the good stuff going on. So I like that. I like, it's gonna be walkable. I think it'll be a catalyst. I regret very much that I did not postpone my experimental haircut one day. But I stand before you in support of this development.
Thank you very much.
And I appreciate you all listening to me. I wanna, I wanna, I wanna hear more new thinking about this kind of stuff. I've, I've heard the, the, the kind of, the old thinking. But frankly, I don't see the magnitude of heat. I don't see that being justified completely. I can see the heat, but the magnitude of the emotions around that, I don't, I don't see it, but I, I don't deny it. So, and I believe it'll bring a critical mass of vitality to this area. It'll be good. We keep our eyes on it. We will hope, have faith. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, council. My name is Amy Smith. I live at ten eighty Ross Road. I am a resident first. I'm also on the planning commission as well. I think the biggest thing I wanna stress is, what I've heard a lot of is it's, it's either/or. It's yes or no. We can't do the apartment because of these issues that I don't deny. But we can approve these apartments, and we can address these residents' concerns of crime and speed and amenities. We can do both, you know? It's not either/or. And the other thing is that it's not us homeowners, single family versus them, apartments, renters and people, you know? I heard a lot about, I love my neighbor. I moved in and I was embraced by my neighbor. Well, why can't that continue? Why can't we embrace people who move into this building and rent? They are your neighbors too. We have this, if, if they're in Whitehall a year, if they're in Whitehall for five years, they are your neighbor, and it's not a single-family homeowner. It gets more voice than a renter. You live in Whitehall, and you get a voice. You know, we also, I also heard a lot about protection. You know, are we talking about privacy? You know, views, screening, landscaping? I can understand that. But when we talk about protection, I wasn't around for some of these other bigger developments or as involved as I am now. But I would question, council, did we ask about security cameras at Norton Crossing? Do we ask about, you know, six-foot-high fencing for security at these other developments that we've already approved? You know, if we're gonna do these types of things, whether it's on the west side of town or east side of town, you know, we need to look at these all the same way, no matter if a unit's a thousand dollars or five hundred dollars. You know, and there, there is no malicious intent. It, it feels sometimes as if people think we told them exactly where to build. But that's not how this works. You know, it's land size. It, is, is it available for sale? You know, there are things we can't control. We can't just because maybe somebody could come up with a perfect other plot that it's available for sale or is even gonna be an option. And I know we talked about the storm in Stewart, and having extensive conversations with Zach and other people about these issues. You know, new developments seem like they're going to create more problems, but when it comes to our storm lines, they actually improve the problems. You know, these sites were built at a time where we didn't have the strict regulations we do now. I haven't read it, but I, I've skimmed it to try to understand these complaints. You know, these new developments, we ask them to retain massive amounts of storm water on their site that currently does not exist. That's helping us. You know, and, and as somebody who's in the profession of architecture, you know, to talk about their elevations and their site plans, in the process, we ask developers to come before Planning Commission and City Council very early on in the process. You know, as somebody who does these types of drawings every day, like, there's a lot of questions that we don't have answered. And while that can seem a little dismaying, it's actually a good thing because there's still time to change something. There's still time to revise. You know, it's not all set in stone. Because if you were to do that, you know, a building's completely done, and we wanna ask and have these requests of the developer, it becomes extremely costly. And that's why we do things the way we do. You know, it's not us, and I say us as single-family homeowners versus them, people who live in apartments. And it's not a question of either/or. We can address their concerns. We can continue to address them, as I'm sure that they've been vocal about it before. We can do both. It's not an either-or question. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amy.
Counsel, mayor, director attorney, citizens, well. Chris Webb, ten twenty-six West Hall Avenue. First, I'd really like to thank you for coming out. Against it, for it, civic debate is by our community and having your voice heard. I appreciate the citizens. Thank you, especially you for sharing a pretty personal story and another dramatic story that I hear. And it's one that... Safety, it's a concern. I get it. Even though this is not my ward, crime is a spot from work to work, from street to street. It affects a lot of us in Whitehall. So with that, I've reached out to individuals in central Ohio to figure out what are we doing? I've reached out to Gary Tykes' office, Van Cline prosecutor. I've reached out to Zach Klein, Columbus City Attorney. I've reached out to our attorney here, Michael Bittman, to have a conversation at some point. And what I've heard is high-density apartment complexes, units, they actually help turn back crime from the visibility, the walkability. This is what they say is needed for that neighborhood. And I spoke to Sharon Parsons, who's the chairperson of the East Main SID, which is the special district. They're the ones that worked to improve that Main Street spread from Whitehall effectively. So when you see those new Whitehall, that's what they work on. From the feedback that I've heard, this is the same, this is the type of thing that turns back safety. So I just wanted to share that, which I, I hear the concerns on safety and gunshots and crime. I hear it too. So that's why I sought out the information to figure out, what, what can we do about this? From a development standpoint, from a public safety standpoint, from a citizen's standpoint, this is one of the things I've heard. One last thing I'd wanna share is, my family moved here to Whitehall in nineteen ninety-one. I played T-ball little league with some sons here of, of council, and what I, what stays with me is a city of pride. And I know opportunity is here, but if you grew up here, it's a city of pride. And I think the, the pride aspect is, we love Whitehall. And I heard that tonight, you know, Jerry Dixon, you take a lot of pride. I would've never known that he's on your job, I mean, seriously. So like, there's pride in this community. But to, to Amy Smith, this one, there's pride in your neighbor, and there's pride in never having... one, there's pride in your neighbor, and there's pride in never having pre-sign diagnosis on who you are. The pride is, I'm going to welcome you, and you're, I'm going to judge you by the character, it's not, you come in here at section eight, you're an imballer or low affordable housing, it's, who are you as a neighbor, who are you as a citizen? And for me, I've heard a lot of fear, and I don't live in a place of fear, I want to live in a place that welcomes people, there's pride in who we are, what we can be, and we support each other. And so, everything that we're hearing on the deterrence, I want to find a solution for it, and I, from what I've heard, a solution to this crime and to improve safety has been units like this, so, thank you for your time, I just wanted to share that, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if, if I could say a couple words, um, the, the administration obviously is a proponent of this project, um, and, you know, as someone who grew up here, I certainly can understand residents', um, concerns as it relates to traffic, as it relates to crime, um, but as, as we try to evaluate these projects objectively, you know, we look at the current condition, and, and most of the comments you heard this evening were about the current state of crime, um, and I think, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Webb hits the nail on the point, kind of stole one of my points, is that, um, the best way to deter crime is to have redevelopment occur, is to improve properties, is to have eyes on the street, uh, criminals don't want to do criminal activity where they feel like they're being watched, and, and the best way to do that is to add eyeballs. Um, it's the same reason we had the conversation about, you know, should we not have businesses put bars on their windows, but should we try more to get more businesses in and to fill up vacant properties? Um, you know, the, we also heard today about, you know, traffic and how much traffic this will add, you know, there are a lot of, um, there's a lot of information, um, you know, I spent a little time on the Institute of Transportation Engineering, um, which was an exciting read, let me tell you, but, you know, the average trips that this, uh, development will generate is four to five times less than if a gas station with a convenience store was built on this site, there'd be less traffic if, you know, we were at planning commission a couple weeks ago and Dollar General was there, and someone from the crowd said, why can't you put a Dollar General there? A Dollar General would generate significantly much more traffic than, I'm going to get to crime, but just in traffic, what it's zoned for today, if the owners wanted to sell it to Dollar General, there'd be no stopping it because it's already zoned for that, and it would create more traffic, significantly more traffic. As someone who grew up on Mayflower, I, I know that there are people who are speeding. Uh, my parents had a car totaled out on the, the bend, I had one, a drunk driver at eight in the morning ran into our house, I don't doubt that it occurs, but, and Megan had, Megan, we pass these out to Council? What I have, Council, and we talked about it at, oh, Jen is here, um, I, sorry, you were, you were hiding, Jen, um, I have the, hold on, the report, um, we have the traffic survey that were, that was done by the Division of Police, and so, I don't need one, I have one. Um, they were in the two fifty block and the five fifty block of Maplewood. Now, I, I'm not going to sit up here and tell you whether or not I know that they were the, the flashy radar camera or the covert one, because I don't know that, but talking to the Division of Police today, what they tell me is that whichever one it, it is, has no bearing on the numbers, that the numbers are the same whether it's the flashy radar one or it's the covert one, and this is the report that was emailed to me from our, uh, crime analyst, and again, you can see. The average speed in the two fifty block was twenty-six point three seven over a three-week period with sixty-five thousand cars over that three-week period. Now, the, the public can say, well, that's just not right because I said on my porch and I see people speeding, they do, but the average speed is this, in the five fifty block, the average speed is thirty-seven, is twenty-seven point three seven miles an hour. And again, I don't doubt that they see speeders, that people pass them, there was a gentleman at the planning commission who talked about being rear-ended, I know what that experience is like, and I'm certainly not trying to dismiss that there is speeding that happens on that street. I think that the key, though, to addressing the speeding is through the three Es, education, enforcement, and engineering. It's not through not rezoning a property on the corner of Main and Maplewood. The other thing that we heard was crime, and, uh, again, I, I don't know, uh, what I heard was a lot of fears of the people who are going to be living there, and there's, the, I understand that there's crime that occurs just outside of Whitehall's border, you know, to the west, but has, as it's been said, the way to reduce crime is not only additional enforcement from our Division of Police, but it's by redeveloping areas. If you talk to the Division of Police, what has the crime done since we've been able to redevelop different areas of town? That's a real thing, redevelopment lowers crime, it just does. But we talked about property values, and, and people are concerned that their property values are going to go down, I, I find it hard to believe that a vacant industrial site for the last twenty years, that's an eyesore, no offense, Eddie, that's an eyesore, is somehow keeping property, property values on Maplewood afloat. There are lots of studies, um, and in fact, um, I have two studies I'll provide you with, one, um, from the University of Utah, um, that showed that the impact of new apartments on single-family homes within a mile, uh, found that the ones that were within a mile, or in, within a half a mile, had a higher increase in property value than those farther away. You know, between two thousand and ten and two thousand and nineteen, homes located within a half a mile of the newly constructed apartment building experienced a ten percent average, while those further away only an eight point six. So, it does have a, actually, a more beneficial impact on that. A, a study out of, uh, Stanford, uh, showed that, again, in a ten-year study conducted on new prop, new projects, that new projects lowered, uh, neighborhood crime and improved property values. It, you know, Brian Savage, you know, one real estate agent, we could have provided you with more, that'll tell you, based on the data, it actually is going to improve the neighborhood. I understand that there is a lot of concern over what this could be, but I don't believe that that's what it's actually going to be. I think we have talked a lot about how to ensure that we are building housing for everybody, and we've heard from people today that said that they were, they had bought their first home. We have a fifty-four thousand unit gap of affordable housing in central Ohio, there are two hundred and twenty jobs available today on Broad, Hamilton, or Main that pay an average of eleven dollars. The average of the person who would live at this new development is going to make about sixteen, seventeen dollars an hour, and I think the information that the developer provided that says that, you know, they just evaluated their waiting list, but seventy-five percent, seventy percent of the people on the waiting list were people who lived within three miles, these are already people living in our community. I, I think saying we're not going to approve projects like this when we have approved them in the past with similar density and similar parking a, and similar heights, you know, the, the Broadwood, Aetna Flats, those were all approved with similar standards. This is on a major commercial corridor with, with improving transit, and I've heard from a number of you that, you know, we really wish Main Street and Whitehall was more walkable, we had more places to, more restaurants, more retail, more things, you know, I, I even had, uh, one resident say, why can't Whitehall and, uh, and why can't Main Street and Whitehall look like Main Street and Bexley? Well, we have to start approving developments that are more dense, that bring more people in, retail follows rooftops, we want to make it more pedestrian-oriented, we can't build it with seas of parking lots. The national average says this is right in line, the Board of Zoning and Building Appeals last night approved a parking variance, the planning commission approved the pro, the project with the current project, or with the current parking. I understand that this is a very passionate, very heated meeting, dare to say it's the longest meeting I can remember, and maybe since, maybe since trash the first time, Chris, maybe since Walmart, but if we want to, if we want our Walmart to get better, if we want vacancies on Main Street to go away, we have to, we have to do redevelopment. This has been vacant for twenty-five years, or, or for twenty years, sorry, they're talking about a twenty-five million dollar investment. And, you know, to the, the questions about what kind of screening, council can certainly put whatever requirements they would want, they can certainly pass the, uh, the ordinances with a provision with, on the condition that the applicant come back and get the landscaping approved by city council as well. So, there are ways to do it, if that's a concern, to approve the zoning and, and require the landscaping plan, including if it's a fence or a berm or evergreens or whatnot, to have to come back before this body. Thank you. I think that's it for me.
Okay. At this time, I will, at, uh, ten fifty, I will close our first public hearing, forty-six twenty-two-one. At this time, I will open public hearing for ordinance forty-eight twenty-two-one, which is amending the zoning map attached to chapter eleven twenty-two of the nineteen seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and is subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under eleven twenty-three point oh-six C seven to allow an apartment dwelling structure containing more than twelve dwelling units on the property located on thirty-five forty East Main Street and seven thirty-nine and seven twenty-one Maplewood Avenue, parcel numbers oh nine oh, zero zero two, one twenty-two, zero nine zero, zero zero one, eight ninety, zero nine zero, zero zero three, six forty, zero nine zero dash zero zero one, nine hundred, zero nine zero dash zero zero two, four eighty-five, zero nine zero dash zero zero three, six thirty-eight, and zero nine zero dash zero zero eight, two forty, property owned by MAMA Company Incorporated. Uh, so at this time, at ten fifty-one, I will open this public hearing and would ask that the proponents, applicants, please come forward.
Mr. President, could I just make a suggestion in the interest of time, that I think the applicant has made, you know, if their presentation would be the same, correct? It, it would be the same, that maybe we could jump right ahead to opponents and proponents?
Well, that's fine if the applicant will such stipulate.
Unless you have more to add. Abs, I'm just.
You know, a lot of interesting things on both sides been said tonight, and, you know, one of the big concerns is who wants to live there, you know, who wants to live with crime and all this, but we're, we're, we're building on this corner because we believe in Whitehall, we believe in its revitalization, that, that twenty-nineteen development blueprint is a perfect example of why we want to be here, it's because we see your future, we think that, you know, yes, we're, we're only developing one corner, we can't make Main Street walkable, but you have to do it one step at a time. Um, you know, we, we truly are committed to maintaining our properties, um, I, I, I can't stress that enough, and, and, and one study that I looked up myself, which I thought was very interesting, but, um, it was a twenty-nineteen study out of Georgetown University, and it said that each year a child spends in a housing credit property, it showed that they have a three-point-five percent increase in obtaining higher education every year they're there, and a three-point-two percent increase in future earnings every year they're there. And that's because these sorts of developments create upward mobility, you have people who aren't spending their entire income, they're hard-working people here in your community that, you know, don't have to spend their entire paycheck on rent, and they can save and buy a house, it, it's here for upward mobility, it's here to help people, and if you truly believe in, in the residents of Whitehall and believe in upward mobility and believe in the hard-working citizens here, we, we greatly, you know, request that you approve this tonight, so, um, again, I, I just want to thank everyone for their time, um, I know it's late and I'll, I'll stop now, thank you.
Thank, thank you. Um, Zach, does the city have a staff report, take care to wish above and beyond what's already been given?
Our staff report is, is with one staff report for both of you.
Uh, that's, that's fine, I'm just.
And even if we did, we don't have one now.
Okay, I'm, I'm going through the process. Um, at this time, if there's any opponents who would like to step forward, um, and this would be ideally for something, uh, different than what's already been stated, so I think everything's been.
Uh, something that hasn't been stated.
Okay, a name and address for the record.
My name is Kathy Holmes, six Kathleen Holmes, I'm at six eighty-nine Maplewood. The thing is, okay, you put the apartment complex there, that's Columbus on the other side, you have no control over what Columbus does with their properties, you say that's going to bring them up, you know, it's not going to help. I just hope you've listened to those that are not wanting this, we, you know, like I said, there's no place for the kids to play. The other thing is, you said the speed limit things that they put up there, yeah, I come down through there, I'd see them, I'd slow down, so when my car got to it, it was slow. Um, the thing is, how high did they set that? Because I noticed that maybe when I see a car going, and the lights were flashing that they're going too fast, was thirty mile an hour or so? What was the highest speed they took? Because you take thirty mile an hour, what's it going to come out to you over those sixty? If it doesn't go any higher than that?
They're supposed to be set to go off right at the speed limit, so if it's twenty-five, it starts flashing at twenty-six.
Right, and you're going over. Right, but is it taking?
It actually starts registering before it flashes.
Okay.
Correct.
So, it's showing you at twenty-seven, it goes blank and all these lights are flashing, it doesn't show the actual speed that person's going for.
But it, but it records it.
Yeah, it records it.
Just because it might not show you what the speed is, it does, it does record it.
Because I've seen a lot of the cars going, and I mean, that thing's, and I've had cars behind me or in front of me, I ride a motorcycle, sometimes it never register, and then other times, my car, I was going, you know, twenty-five, and it's saying twenty-seven or flashing at me, I'm thinking, and there's nobody around, I thought, what in the heck's this thing doing? It's registering me higher than what my car speed says, and my GPS goes, I always check my car speed with the GPS because trying to help make sure my car doesn't need alignment or something, or tires are different.
Just for point of clarification, um, the data recording limits are the highest speed it will accept is seventy-five and the lowest is fifteen.
Right.
So, it, it records everything in between.
And I just seen, you know, like I said, I've seen the light flashing, but how high did they have it set? You know, because anybody could go through there at forty or so, and they're only registering at, say, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
I.
You know, but you said it's over that?
Yes, thank you. It captures every car, every speed between those two points.
Fifteen and seventy-five?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there no other opponents, are there any proponents that would have anything different to share that other than what's already been shared? Okay, um, hearing nothing further, I will close public hea, uh, uh, public hearing on ordinance forty-eight twenty-two-one at ten fifty-seven, and now we'll get to balance of our agenda. Ms. Og, would you please call roll as to whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, including any add-on legislation?
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, under third reading, we have several items, uh, first one is ordinance forty-three twenty-two-one, making a fund transfer in the amount of forty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-four cents from the bond retirement account one oh one dash nine fifty dash fifty-seven thousand five hundred to the debt service fund four oh one and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance forty-three twenty-two-one, move for its adoption.
Second. Ordinance forty-three twenty-two-one was introduced by Mr. Rodriguez, was seconded by Mr. Morrison for its adoption, there's no discussion on the motion. Ms. Og, please call roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-three twenty-two-one has been adopted. Ordinance forty-six twenty-two-one, amending the zoning map attached to chapter eleven twenty-two of the nineteen seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and is subsequently amended, changing the zoning on a property located at thirty-five forty East Main Street and seven thirty-nine and seven twenty-one Maplewood Avenue, parcel numbers zero nine zero dash zero zero two, one twenty-two, uh, zero nine zero dash zero zero one, eight ninety, zero nine zero dash zero zero three, six forty, zero nine zero dash zero zero one, nine hundred, zero nine zero dash zero zero two, four eighty-five, zero nine zero dash zero zero three, six thirty-eight, and zero nine zero dash zero zero eight, two four. zero dash zero zero eight, two four oh, from R three Residential District and General Commerce District, GCD, to A two Apartment District, property owned by MAMA Company Incorporated.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance forty-six, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, move for its adoption.
Second.
There has been a motion to introduce and move for the adoption of ordinance forty-six, twenty-twenty-one. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. President. I, we've been discussing this, so Mrs. Smith made a statement, and she was very accurate about some of the things that we approved in the past, so I reached out to Council Morrison, and we had quite a few things here. Um, Norton Cross and Kelly Green, we do have a six-foot privacy fence in the back for the protection of the, uh, of the residents there. I'd like to have that added to, um, this legislation. Um, I'd also like to add elimination of the first three parking spaces closest to Main Street, and I would like for them to come back with a landscaping designs to council for approval, because we had quite a few questions on that.
Landscaping and the, uh, playground area.
And the playground area, please.
Mr. Pres- Mr. Pres-
It'd be the landscaping.
That's correct. Mr. President, if I could just, point of order, just so that it's, uh, it's, everything is okay, there's been a motion for approval. I would think that that would need to be, uh, the motion would need to be with those conditions, so I would respectfully ask Mr. Rodriguez to amend his motion to include those conditions.
Chris.
Chris, that would be the six-foot fence, uh, removal of the first three parking spaces on the south side, well, closest to Main, correct, and that the landscaping plan has got to be approved by council.
And playground.
To include, to include.
The playground.
To include the playground.
Yeah, the landscaping plan, including playground.
And that would be a privacy fence, not a change.
Six-foot privacy fence.
Yes.
All right, I got this. Mr. President, I'd like to reintroduce ordinance forty-six, twenty-twenty-one, move for its adoption with the amendment, including a six-foot privacy fence, including removal of the three parking spaces closest to Main on Maplewood, including the playground area and including.
The approval of landscaping by council.
Okay.
The design.
So moved.
Second, Lord.
I, I, I know that.
Specify the privacy fence is on the north side of the property.
Right, north side.
North side, yeah.
Yes.
Fair enough.
Julie, you got all that?
Do we able to get all that? We threw a lot at you.
Okay.
Sorry.
And, and that was seconded by Ms. Elmore. Now, is there any further discussion on ordinance forty-six, twenty-twenty-one?
Mr. President, I, I guess I'd just like to say that it seems we've had a lot of, um, energy in the room this evening, both, uh, pro and against. Um, I heard a lot of, I'd like to term negativity on the opponents, uh, as far as crime. It seems like, like, you know, I, I lived on, on Robinwood for thirty years almost, and, and I'd love to get back to the woods if I could find, but right now housing's crazy, but regardless of that, uh, it seems like, I mean, you guys brought up some wonderful, like, uh, some wonderful things, but the fact is, it's almost like we're trying to rubber stamp these people. We know they're going to be bad. We know they're going to be criminal. We know they're going to run through our yards. We know, we know, we know, we know there's going to be more prostitution, you know, and, and, you know.
I'm not always crazy.
Okay, I've got the floor right now, please. So, but that, I guess, I guess that's what I heard, okay, in fairness. Um, and we've, we've got a lot of positive things being said as well, and we've worked so hard to change Whitehall for the better. I think we just need to keep moving forward with this. We need to, we need to give this a chance. If we can get this going, there's the opportunity across the street, there's opportunity down the street to have, Jerry, you know, you know, you like those, the, the buildings right up by the road? There's, this is the beginning of that, you know, so, um, I don't know. I just, I, I think that we've got to start somewhere, and this is our western gateway. This is a good start. It may not be perfect, but it beats some of the stuff that you guys didn't even hear tonight, that were brought, that were, that were suggested, uh, no sense, you know, ad nauseam once on this, but some of the stuff that was brought up, who would want a, a gas station there with all the tr- traffic and all the people and all the theft and all that? Who'd want more U-Haul? You know, at least this is something. So let, let's give it a go. Let's, let's see what happens. Worst case, you know, you can call me because, or, you know, it's, my number's in the flyer there, so, anyway, that's my take on this thing. Let's, let's give it a go. Good land, yeah.
Thank you, Chris. Ms. Coniston?
Yeah, I, absolutely, I would like to talk. Well, first of all, I want to thank all of you for coming out here. I see you so many times out here. We are all open-minded. When somebody asks us if we were open-minded, yes, we are. Um, it's extremely late, I've been up since five-thirty. I know all of you have also. Um, change is hard. I remember when, um, I lived south of Maine, I remember when Franklin County told the service was just going to come in, and I sat up there with my fellow council members that were in full agreement with it, and it was my neighborhood, it was my neighbors. It was, you know, we were worried about the same exact things that we're worried about with this, you know? Is it going to increase the traffic? Is it going to increase crime? Who are the people that are moving in there? And someone else turned out to be wonderful for the city of Whitehall, and I do believe that this will also, one of the promises I made when I got in was that we would have workforce housing. This is workforce housing. That means that these people that are moving in here are essential workers. These are people that are not making a hundred thousand dollars a year. These are people that, that are moving in here, when I hear they, they versus us, you are all new neighbors at one point, too. You are all new to Whitehall. We need to be a welcoming city. We need to go ahead and embrace these new people that are coming in here and make them a part of our community. That's what goes ahead and deters crime. That's what goes ahead and make sure that the traffic slows down, is going ahead and making sure that we are embracing them, that, that are not only us, but you, um, our police, our fire, um, the whole community. So, you know, I hope that you will also keep an open mind, um, if this does get passed and if these people do move in, I would hope that you would also be welcoming to them.
Thank you, Karen. Anybody else? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Did you amend it?
Rodriguez?
And you gotta, you gotta have a second on the, on the amended?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yeah.
It's late. Are we voting on the amendment yet?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good.
We're going on the, on the amendment, amended, uh, ordinance.
If I could, point, point of order, it, you, it's a motion to introduce and approve with conditions.
With, with the amendment.
So it's not, it's not amending the ordinance.
Right.
It's with conditions.
So it's just the one vote.
So it's only one vote.
Yes, correct.
So it's, it's just on the, on the ordinance with conditions.
Right.
So it's just be the one vote.
You got all that, Joe?
Okay.
You sure?
Ms. Og, please call roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
No.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-six, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance forty-eight, twenty-twenty-one, amending the zoning map attached to chapter eleven twenty-two of the nineteen-seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and is subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under eleven twenty-three point oh-six C seven to allow an apartment dwelling structure containing more than twelve dwelling units on the property located on thirty-five forty East Main Street and seven thirty-nine and seven twenty-one Maplewood Avenue, parcel numbers zero, zero nine zero dash zero zero two, one twenty-two, zero nine zero dash zero zero one, eight ninety, zero nine zero dash zero zero three, six forty, zero nine zero dash zero zero one, nine hundred, zero nine zero dash zero zero two, four eighty-five, zero nine zero dash zero zero three, six thirty-eight, and zero nine zero, zero zero eight, two forty, property owned by MAMA Company Incorporated.
Mr. President, could you read those parcel numbers again?
It would be my distinct pleasure.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance forty-eight, twenty-twenty-one, and move for its adoption with the same, uh, conditions as, uh, ordinance forty-six.
Second.
Um, Mr. Rodriguez has introduced ordinance forty-eight, twenty-twenty, seconded by Ms. Elmore, uh, for adoption as, uh, with the additions as stated in, uh, ordinance forty-six, twenty-twenty-one.
With conditions.
With conditions, yes, with conditions as stated in forty-six, twenty-twenty-one. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
No.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-eight, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Under second reading, we have one piece of legislation that will be read by title only, and that is Resolution fourteen, twenty-twenty-one, adopting the tax budget for the city of Whitehall, Ohio, for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty-twenty-two, and submit the same to the county auditor. Under first reading, we have ordinance fifty-four, twenty-twenty-one, approving and making a subsequent appropriation of thirty-six thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and five cents from previously unappropriate monies in the Wim Petty Fund, two seven nine, to the Air South One Incentive Account, two seven nine point zero 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 point fifty thousand six, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance fifty-four, twenty-twenty-one, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. Mr. Rodriguez has introduced ordinance fifty-four, twenty-twenty-one, seconded by Mr. Morrison with the request to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt, seconded by Mr. Morrison for ordinance fifty-four, twenty-twenty-one. Any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-four, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance fifty-five, twenty-twenty-one will be read by title only this evening, and ordinance establishing certain code violations as payable citations not requiring, not requiring a personal appearance at court. Um, ordinance fifty-six, twenty-twenty-one will also be read by title only, amending ordinance number forty-nine dash twenty-eleven to update the tax exemptions available within the East Broad Street District Community Reinvestment Area. Ordinance fifty-seven, twenty-twenty-one will also be read by title only, amending ordinance fifty-one, twenty-eleven, to update the tax exemptions available within the Main Street East Community Reinvestment Area. Ordinance fifty-eight, twenty-twenty-one will be read by title only, amending ordinance forty-eight, twenty-eleven, to update the tax exemptions available within the Town Square District Community Reinvestment Area. Our final piece of legislation this evening is Resolution sixteen, twenty-twenty-one, resolving to approve the then-announced certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce, uh, Resolution sixteen, twenty-twenty-one, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Rodriguez has introduced Resolution sixteen, twenty-twenty-one, and been seconded by Ms. Coniston, requesting suspension of all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Resolution sixteen, twenty-twenty-one has had the rules suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Ms. Coniston. Any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Resolution sixteen, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. This brings us to our second poll publicly of the evening, and again, just to, uh, repeat that, um, need folks to state their name and address, uh, it'll be afforded three minutes, and it must be on a different subject than one that was already addressed if somebody had come up earlier.
Sorry, I'm.
Are you, are you?
I am.
Okay, hi.
Just go handout with it.
Thank you.
Not pretty.
Thank you, Joe.
I'll just.
This is my last opportunity to speak, uh, before council this month, and I need to get this in. Gerald Dixon, thirty-eight, seventy-seven, Donie Street. As a gay man who was born and raised in Whitehall, I wanted to acknowledge and praise the administration's efforts with the pride signs and crosswalks painted in the pride colors. And while that kind of acknowledgement in a smaller town, in my hometown, does the spirit of this now older fighter's heart proud, beneath this, uh, new, beneath this newfound broader acceptance with corporate sponsorship and civic involvement, we mustn't forget that the inclusion and happiness which go along with it were forged and made possible by the many lives of pain, uh, shattered and lost, who fought and struggled for days like these. Wrongs and trespasses and beatings, killings and death, for murder or AIDS that remain always within us. Those who stood up and spoke out when it was dangerous to do so, and demanded to be treated as human beings with the fairness and kindness all of us deserve. I say this to you as one who survived being gay in America. I was one who marched in the first gay pride parades in Columbus nearly forty years ago when bomb threats were called into the rally's location. So too, where we marched, uh, through gauntlets of Christians whose arms were raised up on both sides of the Broad Street Bridge as we passed through them in their attempts to heal us sick perverts from our sin. I marched in massive pride parades in New York City during the heights of the AIDS crisis in the late eighties and early nineties, have seen friends succumb to AIDS, and remember well the silence equals death campaign of Larry Kramer. I have paid in my own blood, as you see in the photo I provided council, drawn on the streets of New York City, being chased down like a dog, where they kicked me in the face, they spit the word faggot from between their clenched teeth, breaking my nose and blackening my eyes in the process. I was lucky to get away from them as I knew they wanted me dead. This only blocks from where Julio Rivera had his head bashed in with a claw hammer and knife to death because he was gay, less than two years prior to my own experience. So, while these efforts are tangible evidence of the progression and acceptance LGBTQ plus people have fought and died for it again, and while we all bask in the lovely glow and warm, the lovely and warm glow of acceptance and inclusion, I hold close to me my own traumas, wanting only to remind everyone of the cost to brothers and sisters and fathers So, while these efforts are tangible evidence of the progression and acceptance LGBTQ plus people have fought and died for it again, and while we all bask in the lovely glow and warm, the lovely and warm glow of acceptance and inclusion, I hold close to me my own traumas, wanting only to remind everyone of the cost to brothers and sisters and fathers and mothers and aunts and uncles, real human beings, who paid a price of pain so grievous that I don't view these efforts so much as the show of solidarity among humans that they are, but rather as worthy tributes to those comrades who struggled and died, wrapped up in vibrant colors on our city streets for all to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward for poll public? Hearing none, I will now open up the community date board.
Whoa.
July eighteen, there is no...
My life is out of mind right now.
Right, right, July, real quick, July second, eight to ten fireworks viewing picnic, July third, ten o'clock, starting at Yearling and Broad Street, just parade, June sixteenth, Lampy Lane picnic, June twenty-third, from two to three, Wednesday, Speak Up and Speak Out, conversation about race, online reading challenge, twenty-two-one, September twenty-ninth through, I'm sorry, May twenty-ninth through July thirty-first, and Walk and Recovery, June fifteenth, noon to eight P.M., Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and then the Summer Sports Camps one to three, Monday through Thursday, and registration is required at Whitehall, Yearling High School.
To add to that, the registration is online at the website, or you can call Parks and Rec for Sports, they're going on now, and it is at the high school. Also, there is free lunch at Bee Wood and Rosemore, Monday through Friday from eleven to twelve-thirty, and at Atna, Monday through Friday from eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty.
Thank you. Does everybody else have anything for community date board? That brings us to poll council. Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good to have such a good crowd here this evening. Like I say, it's a very passionate evening, and without a doubt the longest meeting ever. First of all, it's good to be back in the venue, good to kind of get back to normal a little bit. Jerry, thanks for your remarks. I mean, a lot of us know your story, but it's, like I said, about a different subject a few weeks ago. It's a shame that we're still having this conversation today. You know, it's a shame that we're still having to have so much prejudice against someone's sexual orientation or their race or creed or color, but for some reason we still are, and that's a shame. But anyway, thanks for sharing that, so. One last thing I had, I'm a proponent of shop Whitehall whenever you can. My dear friend Wes out here told me a long time ago, go to Shell, go to Shell gas station. You might spend two or three cents more, but you're bi-local and it's better gas. So I've done that for years, thanks to Wes. One of the girls there, Clara Boyd, passed away Saturday, young lady, thirty-six years old, two children, at home, and it was just one of those freak things. She went home, wasn't feeling well, went into a seizure, and no, you know, she passed. So today, they had a collection out there for her, by the grace of God, I just needed gas today, so I was able to donate towards this young lady's family. But anyway, so Vicki said if anybody would like to donate, she, you know, she will still take donations for the family. They, I can't really realize, I think Vicki and Tim.
Oh, well, the parents.
Yes.
Wonderful, I mean, they're a wonderful family. Wouldn't surprise me if they match everything they gave, given in. I don't know that for a fact, I'm just saying, they're just, they're a great family, and they're great Whitehall ambassadors. Ambassadors. So, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Elmore?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank everybody that's viewing, Facebook, probably checked out by now. Thank you for all the comments that came forward. It did help us, we did revise some things, and your, your information and your comments did not go unheard. One thing that I will say about Whitehall is that I moved here, and it has improved tremendously from what I've seen growing up. I have, I was a proponent of affordable housing, and I also, I grew up in affordable housing, and I used affordable housing. And it's for people to use, and it's, you know, when you put a label on what you think people are going to do, it is, it is false evidence appearing real. That's what fear is. And we have to move outside of that to, to look at what's possible, the possibilities. And one thing that Whitehall is, is opportunity, and this is a place for opportunity. I appreciate the fact that we have drawn out a blueprint that gives us a step-by-step look at what to do, what's going to happen in the future, and we are following it. And so, I'm just, I'm, I'm a proud owner, a homeowner in Whitehall, and I say this again, I moved here on purpose. The other thing that I will say is Juneteenth celebration is a holiday commemorating the day news of the Emancipation Proclamation happened. This weekend, there will be several events, Huber Park Dawson in Riddlesburg, there'll be a five-K unity walk for the community, and African-American Wellness Walk, and just invite people to come out and really see what Juneteenth is really all about. I have nothing else. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Elmore. Ms. Connison?
Thank you. You know what, it's so late. I know that none of you want me to say anything.
That's not true.
I know, I know, you're thinking over there. I tell you, the one thing that I absolutely love about Whitehall is we can all disagree, but then we all come back together again. It's a big community because we have almost nineteen thousand people, but it has that really small-town feel. I knew so many of you out there tonight. It was hard to listen to your stories. I know that you're worried. We're always worried. You know what, until something happens and until we see the good, that's just human nature. So, I say to all of you, I travel every day from Whitehall to Delaware. I could have moved closer a long time ago to, to be closer to where I worked, but I love Whitehall, and I believe in it, I believe in the people, I believe in the community, and I thank you all for coming tonight and voicing your opinion.
Thank you, Karen. Mr. Cantor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be even shorter than you, Karen. I want to thank everybody that came and that watched. We sit up here, and it's, it's tough to do sometimes. I've had a lot of phone calls. Some people have gotten in touch with me the last few weeks of the time, but we try to do what's best for our community. We love this community. Couple weeks ago, we drove down Yearling Road, and this community showed, showed love back to my family and I, and I want to thank everybody. So, we try to do everything, I'm just sorry. We don't let it run every time, but we really do, we really try. Mr. Dixon? I'm really sorry that happened to you. It's a horrible thing. A horrible thing. I can't see it happening in this day and age. I would never let it happen again, so. Chris, I didn't know that, I haven't been to the Shell station this week, I didn't know she passed, but I'll be there tomorrow. So, thanks for, thanks for informing us. And thank you, everybody, and members of the planning commission. You've got a tough job to do yourself. It's not always pretty, but thank you very much, thank you very much. And B C B H, that's all I have as a person.
Thank you for your girls.
God, these girls aren't enough, but I...
They better not be, right?
I love them, I love my family, and I thank you all so much.
Ms. Peck?
Thank you, everybody that came in. It was so nice to see so many people. Thank you, everybody that is hopefully still watching from home. I'm going to be optimistic, let's suck it out. Thank you, Jerry, for getting up and speaking that pride moment. Happy Juneteenth to everybody, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Oh, and I hope to see everybody at Lambie tomorrow.
It is tomorrow night. Yes, that's, it is tomorrow night, I forgot to say. Did you say?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's at Lambie.
Oh, I did, yeah, I said Morton, I'm sorry.
No.
Oh, I thought you said Lord.
It's at Lambie. You keep saying Morton.
I don't know if you said the time, though. Okay, five-thirty, seven-thirty. Thank you, see y'all tomorrow night. Thanks, Joanna.
Mr. Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know that I could add much to any of the comments that's been said. I do greatly appreciate everyone's input, pro and con. I thank you for showing up and would love to see you every week here. Your opinions do matter to us, we do consider them very seriously. I thank you for watching on the internet and Facebook, and everybody have a safe, safe week. Thank you.
I'll just close with, again, I think everything has been said. It's nice that we've been able to open council chambers back up. It's been, as we all know, over a year, so it's really great to have the participation of the community because that really does help fuel the process. This was obviously a very passionate discussion this evening, but it's good, conversation is good, and I think that's a healthy part of the process. So I'd like to thank everybody for making the time to come out and make your opinions known. And Mr. Dixon and I, too, would like to thank you for sharing that story. It's, it's terrible that it happened, and things like that should not, but really do appreciate that you shared that with us. Other than that, I've got nothing further.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, okay.
Jerry, you're taking so long.
Motion by Mr. Cantor, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Is there any discussion on the motion? Got to ask. Ms. Og, please call roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. We are adjourned.